I'm going to be the meeting manager for the first session tonight on digital transformation. So, thank you all for being here this evening. I think the first thing I'm going to do is turn it over to Dr. Garza to put what we're doing tonight into some context. I understand that the PowerPoint is going to take something like around 15 minutes to present and then board members will have about 45 minutes on the schedule to ask questions and make comments. Dr. Garza?
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much. You all received my lengthy email, I guess, last Thursday, late. And again, I want to apologize to you all. We had this work session earlier this month. No, excuse me, we're already in another month, last month, and I was unable to be here. I have watched the tape and I know that there were a lot of questions that we did not answer to your satisfaction. We understand that. So, we've regrouped. We did ask last week if we could have another opportunity to come back to you and I want to thank the Chair and Vice Chair. This was added to an already scheduled evening session because our schedules are already so tight. This was really the only other time that we could add this back to a meeting that was already scheduled. So, we appreciate your patience and your understanding. I know this was a tight timeline, but we felt like this is important work and we want to make sure that you all feel comfortable and supportive of our work moving forward. Our staff is working very hard. We did send out quite a number of documents that we actually posted, but we put them together in a binder for you that you have tonight. And I know you did not have an opportunity to read them today. That wasn't expected. But we wanted you to see the information and some of the work that's been done. Last time, I think our session was maybe too high level and we didn't show you enough of our work. And so, today, we wanted to show you a little bit more of the work in progress. We'll touch on what's in here, but again, this is just a resource document to you. We didn't expect for you to have read through it all tonight, so, before our meeting tonight. So, we'll talk through some of it as we get started. We have studied many other school systems and some of that evidence is in your binder. We'll touch on some of that. We've gathered information from them. We've done extensive lit reviews and some of that information is here as well. We do have a consultant that's working with us. We've been working with a consultant for about five months. The same consultant that was used by Baltimore County very successfully and has worked with many other school system as well. So, we're not working through this blindly. This is work that we are being very thoughtful and strategic about. And in fact, we were looking at some of the work done in Houston ISD and they did the same thing we're about to do. And that is start with the small grouping of pilot schools. They looked at resources they already had just to figure out how to start working with pilot schools and then they developed their enterprise-wide solution. Baltimore did the same thing. So, the approach that we're using is not uncommon for FCPS. We've used pilot kinds of models before to figure out the larger strategy and many other school systems across the country are approaching it in the same way that we are. Tonight, we'll touch on some of that work here. I think Steve may be tell you a little bit about what's in the binder. And as I said before, this is very important work as we think about personalization and our ability to meet the needs of every child in our system, the needs to really make sure we have the ability to use a lot of the new adaptive systems and instructional applications and software. We know that we're going to have to embrace and really have technological tools, not only for our students, but also for our teachers and use those in new and different ways. But we'll talk a little bit about the time, place, path, and pace of learning and that's really what a lot of this work is about. Tonight, we'll answer your questions about the funding because I know that was something that was on your minds and certainly I think a reasonable question. And I think tonight we'll be prepared to show you how we plan to approach it with the pilot-designed schools. And then, some of the other questions will be evidenced and developed as we develop our enterprise-wide solution. And we'll talk more about why we have to kind of figure that out in terms of the enterprise-wide solution because we need, we have some ideas. We know what some other school systems did, but we need some schools to help influence that design and some parents because it will likely have to do with some, maybe potentially some user fees, et cetera. So, tonight, we'll touch on why we also have identified the Chantilly Pyramid as our grouping of schools to work with us over the coming year, maybe even more than a year. We'll also be working with the backpack schools and we'll talk a little bit about the status with those. I know that, Sandy, I think you were asking about kind of what the status with those and we'll show you that as well. So, let's get started with our presentation. We have a short presentation and we want to be able to answer any questions that you have. We do want to show you that we do recognize how important symbols are with important work. And so, we did ask some students to submit to us their ideas for how we might, you know, market and maybe put a name to this work. And so, we had one of our students, happens to be a Chantilly High School student, that developed this symbol for us, FCPS ON. I thought that was really well done. So, we're very proud of that. I think we'll be coming up with a tagline to go with it as we move forward. But we'll start with FCPS ON and I'm going to turn it over to Steve Lockhart and he'll get us started this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Garza. Good evening, school board members. As we stated at the previous work session, the work that we're doing is related to the desired outcomes and strategies of the strategic plan. Our desired outcome, and it's in the plan, is that teachers, students, and parents have access to contemporary and effective technology resources. And really, that's all about supporting this portrait of a graduate outcomes and student learning across our system. As Dr. Garza mentioned, in the work that's happened so far and the work that we know is ahead, we recognize this is a very significant initiative. We also recognize it may require more time. It might mean we hit the pause button occasionally and that's part of why we have the pilot initiative is to really best assess moving forward. And we'll tell you that since November of 2015, a Digital Transformation Steering Committee has been meeting to plan, study, and research the work that was called for in the strategic plan. In addition to, as Dr. Garza mentioned, visiting other school districts that have embarked upon this work, we also assessed the work and activity that was already happening here in FCPS. And that self-assessment really provided some valuable information in terms of starting point and actionable next steps. The project teams were formed and work plans have been developed in each of these eight areas. I referenced them previously. These are identified through the research and as well as our work with our consultant as guiding design principles and they're there for you on the screen. Each of you has been provided with this binder as well as a PDF version. And this provides example documents showing a glimpse of the work that's happened in each of these areas. Not only the work that's happened, but some of our planning and ongoing preparation. In addition, it also includes information related to the selection of the Phase One Pyramid as well at the end. Now, we weren't, oh, and I want to also reference in terms of how it's structured. Each section has cover sheets for the tabs in the packet which highlight our focus area for that guiding principle as well as the contents of each of the sections. So, it helps give you a little sense of what you're looking at there. And while we weren't planning on necessarily going through this binary with you this evening, we are certainly here and available to answer questions related to it or specifics that you might have.
Steve, if I might touch on a couple of things. In your binder, and again, as Steve pointed out, we could really get in the weeds if we go into the binder. But I do want, when you have a chance, when you look under the leadership section, there's some really great work, I think, that's been done around our portrait of a graduate and how digital resources support every component of our portrait of a graduate. And that's really done, I think, very, very well in this document, beginning on page 16 under Leadership. So, and I know this is of great interest to you all, so I think you'll see that there's been some wonderful thought put into every element of the strategic, I mean, of our portrait of a graduate and how this work supports that. You'll see later in the document, page 24, some analysis of what other school systems have done across the country. And then, just to finally, just to touch on page 39, there's an assessment tool that is so comprehensive that I'd like for you to look at at a later time, that really speaks to how we've assessed, from a baseline perspective, each one of the schools, starting with the eBackpack schools, to assess comprehensively their readiness for some of this work. And we're using the same tools with the pilot-designed schools. So, I wanted you to see some of the national instruments that we're using to help assess where we are with each of the schools and that will be a great tool for us to measure progress over time in each of those critical components. And so, I'm going to stop there before we get too much in the weeds, but there's some great documents in here that I think are evidence of the great work that's been done by our team.
Sure.
At the last work session, you'd also asked us about, we'd given you just a highlight of some of the survey data of our parents and that's actually located in the parent community section, starting on page two. So, we have lots and lots of detail. Again, not to go over tonight, but we have the speak-up survey, which is a national survey data, but this is the FCPS data as part of that speak-up survey that you'd asked us for.
Okay. I'll continue on. As we've learned, Dr. Garza mentioned this as well, from several school districts around the country, as well as classrooms and schools within our own district, our research, et cetera, we recognize the need to start small. Through a smaller-scale design pilot initiative, our hope is to gather input and feedback from our stakeholders and continue to learn how we can best support teachers, students, and entire school communities with this important teaching and learning initiative. Through the process designed to indicate pyramid readiness and school and community support, this first phase of work has been purposefully and carefully designed and intended to help us better hone our plans for the instructional framework, including differentiating expectations between elementary and secondary. We recognize that what we do in our elementary schools is going to look different than our secondary schools. Expectations around digital citizenship and assessing standards and expectations related to screen time and our overall resource design work. Just a few examples of what we hope to glean from the pilot work. In addition, the Phase One work will help to better inform our professional development needs, our support models, particularly as we look to our future endeavor of scaling. And of course, funding. The Phase One Design Pilot will yield important information that will impact cost estimates for ongoing phases of the implementation. We're prepared to talk about this this evening, as well as a detailed overview of how we'll utilize our resources for funding of the Phase One work. And in just a couple of minutes, Susan will address that with us. Another part of the plan is to provide you with quarterly written updates and any school board work session updates as you see necessary, particularly throughout the first phase of work. We will also be developing a long-range, comprehensive plan based on our ongoing work with the benefit of the information that we gleaned from the first phase in the Chantilly Pyramid and our e-Backpack High Schools. This comprehensive plan, we hope to present to you at a work session in April of 2017. As it relates to monitoring and evaluating our progress, FCPS is using a nationally-recognized platform tool to collect data to assist in measuring the progress of this initiative over time. Baseline data is going to be collected at the beginning of the school year through short surveys provided to stakeholders. The platform we're utilizing also includes a panel of researchers that review the data, retrieve from the survey responses, and help make professional recommendations that can shape professional development, instruction, a lot of those areas that I'd previously mentioned. Stakeholders, of course, will be surveyed again at the end of that pilot year as well. All that research, data, and customized recommendations will help to strengthen strategic planning and help us measure our progress over time. With that, I'm going to move us to the funding component.
Okay. So, I have the next couple of slides. So, within Phase One, we will be using current resources within our budget. So, it will be fully funded with the existing budget. We are not requesting any new funding for Phase One. And as you can see, we are going to be redeploying current inventory of devices as well as using funds from one-time replacement equipment funding, the technology plan, and the project management funding. And these, combination of these three funding sources will provide for devices as well as the professional learning that's going to be essential with this initiative. And, I'm sorry. And within each of these budgets, at the beginning of each fiscal year, we identify the priorities to address the strategic work of the division. So, within the replacement equipment, within the tech plan, within project management, we have identified the one-to-one digital transformation initiative to be the priority of the work for the division for the school year. So, we have set aside funding in those categories to be able to fund this first phase of the pilot. And as we go forward and expand into additional pyramids, additional schools, we are going to have to come to the board for additional investment for this initiative. We are not going to be able to find funding within our current budget to expand future pyramids. So, kind of going through...
Before you go to the details, I'm going to touch on a couple of other things. We do think the long-term ability, we've done some modeling for this, but we need some, we need some stakeholder input. We do think there will have to be, in terms of the larger enterprise-level kind of solution, we will have to look at a combination of user fees and looking at existing materials, resources, kind of redeployment of existing funds. We do have some ideas around school-based funding, how that might be utilized, but we don't want to consider any of that without having school-based input. That's why these pilot schools, I think, are very important. A lot of our schools are using a lot of their resources on an annual basis to purchase technology. So, we need to spend some time, help better understanding how they're doing that so that we can, somehow or another, we want to figure out how we are using current resources and which of those resources can be redeployed in a different way to help support this work long-term. So, that's why we feel like we've got to have some input from our schools and how we do that. But this is not new funding. This is funding we have on an annual basis. The one-time replacement equipment funding and the technology plan are funding sources that we'll show you next, the details, is funding that we always have in Mary Beth's shop to respond to. Now, I promise you, we don't have nearly enough. We certainly have equipment that's antiquated, but on an annual basis, we'll use that money to replace equipment that we need to replace, replace computers that we need to replace. And so, we've made a conscious decision to say this is something important that we want to fund and so, we're making this a priority. So, there's not some listing somewhere that something's getting pushed to the side. It's every year, we reevaluate where we are, what are our needs this year, and then that funding is used accordingly. The project management funding, that's been in place for many, many, many years. My first year here in fiscal year 15, it was cut by a million dollars. It was, at one time, 1.9 million dollars. That was money that the school system had on an annual basis to help support strategic projects. Makes perfect sense. We need, in fact, we need more than what we have, honestly. But that's the money that our school system has used for major deployments of, you know, work. When the system has said, hey, let's go do this. The project management funding was used to help support startup. I'm trying to think of example, I just went blank, but there have been many examples of how we've used the project management funding. Give me an example, folks.
Responsive instruction.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Best practices.
You know, so different things that the school system has said were a priority. We did cut it by a million dollars my first year, but we do have on an annual basis $900,000 for strategic, to support implementation of strategic work. So, those are the funding sources that we're looking at to help us with just the pilot schools to get us going.
So, in detail, how we're going to be allocating resources from those accounts. Again, for grades K through 2, we are going to be deploying current inventory. So, we've assessed, within the pyramid, I was getting there, we assess the inventory within the pyramid to see how many devices were available and what we can deploy. And we believe we can deploy devices through, from kindergarten through second grade and have them use it during the school day. Obviously, for grades 3 through 12, we are going to have to purchase new devices. We are anticipating approximately 7,800 additional devices will be obtained through outright purchase or lease purchases. And we're going to be using one-time replacement funding of $800,000. And that, those funds were set aside as part of the FY 2015 final budget review. And because those are one-time funds, we are going to do an outright purchase of approximately 2,000 devices with the $800,000. And then, funding totaling 600,000 from the technology plan will be used to lease purchase approximately 5,800 devices. And part of our device strategy is also bring your own device, BYLD. So, depending on how many of those devices we have, these numbers will fluctuate. And then, we are recommending approximately 700,000 from project management to be used to provide the essential professional learning for our teachers, for a total of 2.1 million for the Phase One Design Pilot. And because it is a lease purchase, we are going to have 600,000 dollars worth of payments for four years for the lease purchase of the devices.
That would be within our technology plan and our current budget. So, still no new money. Now, long-term, we'll bring you back a plan for how we think we need to fund the project moving forward. But every school system we looked at, they phased in how they approached this. So, we will look at a combination of fees, redeployment of existing resources, and potentially new money that we may need from the school system. But that plan will be brought to you at a later time.
And we will be exploring fees. We're just not going to be assessing any fees during the design pilot, but that is an area that we're looking at for our expansion. So, now, I'm going to turn it over to, I believe...
And we'll talk more about fees for students after a while. I think it's on another slide.
Mary Beth, to talk about the devices.
Okay. So, as Susan said, in K through 2, we're going to redeploy existing devices within the pyramid because we're going to have some excess as we purchase new devices at 3 through 12. We will have, utilize some of those existing devices and put them down at the K through 2 level. The device that we have selected, and we have some, we've done a lot of research in terms of the variety of different options that we had for devices. We looked at a lot of different school systems that we compared what devices they were utilizing. We looked at all of our instructional resources and what's compatible with different types of devices. And so, and we also looked at cost. And so, we want to keep our cost to a minimum, yet still have the flexibility to be able to utilize our existing instructional resources. So, we brought today the device that we're going to be deploying. This is actually the same, very similar, slightly newer model of the devices that we were using for the e-Backpack schools. So, it is called an HP Pro Book and it's very rugged and durable. It has been holding up extremely well in our six high schools that we've deployed so far. It has, comes with a sleeve. We did not want to have a big bulky case for it because kids wouldn't use it. This is where it provides some protection when they put them inside their regular backpacks. Didn't want a whole separate big bag. So, this was a lot of input from, again, the high school students that we've been working with in terms of the type of case that they felt would be protective, yet not be so bulky that they would just not use it. So, that's the, this is the device and I can, you can pass it around. It's very similar to sort of what you have, only it's a lesser expensive but more ruggedized student, not student-proof, but it's more ruggedized than what we typically get for our adults. So, we've had so far a lot of good success. We provided in your binder, under the digital ecosystems, some summary of the device selection process and what went into it in terms of comparisons of features, cost, et cetera. And I said, there's a digital ecosystems section in your binder. Okay. Et cetera. So, as, also as Susan said, we are going to continue to encourage and offer our students to bring their own devices in. If they, we will be sending out some sort of minimum standards. We allow them to bring in their phones and whatnot as well, but if they want to utilize their own device instead of an FCPS-issued take-home device, it will need to meet some minimum standards. So, we'll be providing that for them. As Susan said, right now, we're not going to have a user fee, but we do anticipate having user fees down the road to help fund our refreshment. So, because we're going to have to replace these every four years. And so, we want to make sure we provide some funding for that. And many of our other school districts that we took a look at also provide, have a student tech fee. So, we were finding it around the country. It's fairly common that that's a way that many of these districts are funding, not the whole cost, but a big portion of the cost of the devices and having a refresh capability.
About 11, 12 years ago, I was responsible for a one-to-one deployment in some schools. This is how many years it's been going on, like 12 years ago.
Right.
But I do think it's still, we learned then, and I think we still know it today, that it's beneficial for students to have some, kind of, if you would, some responsibility tied to having the device. So, other school systems have used that, you know, that fee as kind of creating some student ownership of the device. Plus, it also enables us to create a self-fund. So, if we do have computers that are almost a self-insurance kind of structure, so if a student breaks a computer, there's a way to fund replacement. What we don't, aren't ready to talk about yet, we want to get some parent and school-based input, is how much that should be on an annual basis. What happens if a student doesn't pay? You know, we need to kind of walk through and figure out some of those, some of those structures moving forward. But we do think there's some benefit from what we've learned from some other systems about having the student-user fees.
In addition, we're going to have, we included in your parent-community section, a sample of the parent consent form. So, before kids can take them home, we, in the e-Backpack schools, we gave you an example of a PowerPoint that we use for parent nights to give them information about the program. And also, we asked that the parents sign a consent form before we issue them to take them home. So, that'll be something that we will continue to utilize in our pyramid pilots.
Okay.
All right. Well, good evening. I have to start out by apologizing and say I don't have any devices to pass around for show and tell, so I apologize about that. But the good news is, we only have a few more slides and I'll try to be relatively brief here. But I did want to touch on professional development because as we know, this is going to be a key component of the success of this project. And we are taking a multifaceted approach to professional development. We're going to be looking at teacher professional development and then also training for parents and students is going to be part of this work as well because it's really important. And we understand that as we introduce more technology and create virtual learning environments for our students, for example, that we have a fiduciary duty to make sure that they're going to be safe and responsible in that online learning environment. So, all three of those stakeholders will receive training and support. And we're, of course, going to start the work with our teachers. That work in the Phase One Pilot will begin this summer with some very intensive professional development in a summer digital learning institute, a three-day institute for teachers to participate in getting more information about how to actually use the devices in their classrooms to design personalized, student-centered learning classrooms. They will be getting professional development in just the management of the devices, thinking about how they're going to develop procedures and routines with the new technology in their classrooms, thinking about issues of digital citizenship and online safety, and then, of course, thinking about when it's appropriate to use the technology and when it might be more appropriate to just use traditional face-to-face instruction or maybe a combination of both. We also believe that after we kind of clear the hurdle of making sure that teachers are comfortable managing the devices in their classroom, that we need to help them see how they can use the devices for productivity, hopefully how we can save teachers' time in the teaching and learning process through the appropriate use of technology. And we think when we establish that kind of culture and learning environment in our classrooms, then we can support teachers in thinking about, how do you use these devices to really innovate instruction? And how will we use these devices to change the way students learn in our classrooms in ways that are more individualized, personalized, and that truly do, as Dr. Garza said, change the time, the pace, the path, and the place of learning to meet individual student learning needs? So, after the summer institute, that's going to be very focused on getting teachers ready to start the year, we're planning to continue to provide ongoing job-embedded professional development for all of our teachers that are part of the Phase One Pilot. And our school-based technology specialists will be providing a lot of this support to our teachers. And they will be working with individual teachers and, more importantly, our collaborative learning teams so that we think about embedding instructional technology in the planning cycle, in the instructional delivery cycle, and then the monitoring of student progress and student learning. And in addition to that face-to-face learning, we're putting in place what we would call personalized on... personalized on-demand learning. So this will be virtual professional development that teachers can access and teams can access just in time. So really focusing on things that are most important to them as they're designing and delivering instruction. And we do have, and I'm not going to go into the details of the document, but we do have a professional learning plan that's part of the packet that we've provided for you this evening. And when you open that up, you'll be able to see a list of the types of modules that we plan on providing in this virtual online environment. And we're really excited to try to pilot more of this work through this one-to-one initiative because we actually think personalized virtual professional development, we can access and use that methodology in lots of other areas to really be more responsive to individual teacher learning needs and not give everybody the same type of professional development in a one-size-fits-all approach. So we're very excited to, to implement this and to learn more about it. And then one key area that we want to really highlight, where we will be focusing our work on professional learning, is on digital citizenship. And as we said, we know that we've got a responsibility to make sure that when we provide this technology to our students, that we're helping them to be safe and responsible users of the technology. But more importantly perhaps, we will be providing some direct training and instruction to the students who are going to receive these devices in digital citizenship. So really making sure that as soon as students get their devices, we are teaching digital citizenship skills to our students, thinking about things like, you know, what kind of information are you going to post online? What kind of information are you going to share about yourself and others online? How do you go about keeping your identity, your usernames, your passwords, safe and secure? And how do you go about really establishing a positive digital footprint with this new technology? So we'll be working directly with kids on topics like that. And we'll also, as I said, be working directly with parents. So we're planning to support parents' understanding of why we're issuing these devices, how they can really support individualized student learning, how they can help us with our equity issues and achievement gap issues in the school system. And then we want parents to understand what parents can do to make sure that their students are using the technology responsibly and safely. So we're going to take kind of a two-pronged approach. One will be face-to-face meetings, and we've done this work in our e-Backpack Schools this year. But another is that we're in the process of developing an interactive website where resources and materials and information can be posted for parents, so they can learn more about how to make sure their students are, are safe and responsible users of the technology. And just the last point on this slide, again, just to reiterate that our Phase One Schools are not just the Chantilly Pyramid Schools. They include our e-Backpack Schools. And they also include other one-to-one schools and classrooms that we have in place. So we want to make our professional learning available to any teachers that are working currently in a one-to-one environment. And I did want to highlight just a little bit more information because I know a few board members had questions about our e-Learning Backpack. So this slide provides a little bit of information about where we've deployed those devices and, in the current process. But just as a reminder, the e-Learning Backpack is a grant from the Virginia Department of Education. The funding was provided specifically for schools that had accreditation issues or concerns, and schools that had high ESOL populations in their schools. Only high schools, yep, only high schools. And again, the attempt was to try to make sure that we're thinking about equity issues and closing the achievement gap by providing the learning resources to some of our more economically disadvantaged students. So these are the schools where the devices have been deployed. And you can see from each of these schools that they've taken a different implementation plan and process based on their levels of readiness and, and their interest and capabilities to be able to implement this work successfully. And that's okay because different schools are going to implement in different ways. And that's one of the reasons when we put the Pyramid Proposal in place, is we said we have to make sure that we've got a group of schools that are going to think about implementing in the same way and in the same timeframe because we know different schools are going to implement differently in some of our other innovation work and implementation work. But we want to make sure in the, in the Pilot Pyramid or the Phase One Pyramid that we're working consistently with schools. And again, I would just say, just as a reminder, that we do have other schools that are working in one-to-one environments. You may have heard about some of the things that are, schools have done over the past several years. We've done it since I've been in the school system. We've had an Innovation Institute where we've had schools apply and submit proposals to really think about the role of technology in the teaching and learning process. And we want to include those schools in this professional development, professional learning opportunities as well.
I just want to reiterate, kind of emphasize something you said, Slone. I do think it's important to, to, again, just, I know I'm stating the obvious for these board members because you all have schools in your districts or schools that you know of throughout the division that are, are actually have taken upon themselves, and they've embraced technology, and they have a plan and strategy for providing students with technology. There's many of them throughout the division. So our goal with this is develop, and we know this is going to continue. Now we have the state actually giving some of our schools computers, one, for, for students. We know that this is inevitable. We've got to have more support structures in place so that we have assurances and structures in place to make sure that we're utilizing the technology appropriately and that we're providing the appropriate support and professional development for our teachers. So we think this is timely and important for us to, to use this grouping of schools to help us develop division-wide support structures as we move forward.
All right, very good. Thank you. So we also wanted to provide you a little bit of information on the Chantilly Pyramid Proposal and tell you a little bit about why they were selected. This Phase One of FCPS ON was a proposal process. We asked schools to submit information that talked about the level of staff commitment, their instructional readiness, and then the use of the existing digital resources within their schools. And we have some of this information, again, in your binders. And staff readiness was determined in part by a survey, and you can see the survey responses in the chart on this slide that indicate the level of staff interest and commitment in this work. And Chantilly was the highest pyramid in terms of staff support across all of the Pyramid Schools for this work. Additionally, the Chantilly Pyramid actually went even farther, and they used our readiness rubric not just to think about where they were as an entire school, but they actually asked their teachers to use the rubric to think about where as an individual teacher are you on this readiness rubric? And how comfortable would you be about pushing your work forward and really trying to innovate and improve your work and move further towards deep implementation and innovation practices using the readiness rubric? So we thought that that was a very unique leadership action that the Chantilly administrators took. And then also looking at the schools' use of existing technology, Chantilly again had among the highest staff use of existing resources, again, meaning things like software programs that we provide and hardware distribution across their school. So really making sure that they were fully utilizing the resources that they already have in place demonstrates a commitment to continue to do that work. And then on the, the last slide about the Chantilly Pyramid, they took some additional steps beyond what was required to think about staff readiness. And they evaluated the level of parent and community support for this work. And you can see from the pie chart here that approximately 85% of the parents in the Chantilly Pyramid said that they were either totally or very supportive of this work. So again, a very high level of parent support for the work. So overall, the Chantilly Pyramid really demonstrated, I, I think, a lot of initiative in their application. It was very creative and inter, and very interactive in terms of the type of work that they showed that's happening in their classrooms already and talking about how they could further that if they had additional resources. So a lot of, I think, initiative was shown on the part of Chantilly. And we're really hoping, as Dr. Garza said, in Phase One, to be able to work with a set of schools that we can learn from the administrators and learn from the teachers in the school what is necessary to do this work well? And to think about how can we take those lessons and use that in scaling up our work? And I think Chantilly is going to be the perfect partner in this Phase One component of the work.
And then, and then back to me. Our, our plan is, as I think Steve mentioned earlier to you all, is to come back with, after having worked with the variety of schools that have been mentioned today, is to bring back an enterprise-wide plan that would be a long-term plan. Now, I'm not going to suggest to you that we would be implementing that into 17 and 18 school year. I still think it's going to be a slow, kind of a phased-in model. But, you know, we'll bring back the plan once we have a lot of stakeholder, teacher and, and principal input. But we don't anticipate, you know, moving that quickly because it will have financial implications. We certainly don't want to do what we learned from some school systems that did not do it well, is they gave every, everyone in the system a computer. Some of them started in ninth grade and say, every ninth grader gets one, then every 10, you know, then, you know, and scaling it up that way. And those are the, those are the implementations that have not been successful. I think it's been a little bit of a challenge with the state initiative. We're very grateful for the money and the resources. But we do need to make sure that our schools that are, you know, getting those great resources are also supported effectively. So we think that's an opportunity to make sure that they're in the support network. But we will bring a long-range enterprise-wide solution to you all next April. And again, I don't anticipate that there, it would, you know, because that will not be ahead of the fiscal year 18 budget. So we know that it could take, you know, a few years for us to, to actually execute on, on the long-range plan. But we do think it's important for us, and I hope you've seen why today, to start with, and this is what other school systems did too. They started with a set of pilot schools where there already is a great degree of interest and awareness and receptivity maybe to using these kinds of models and approaches. That's the best place for us to learn. It's the best place for us to develop our professional development that works, our curriculum instructional models and instructional resources, et cetera. The funding for devices, as I mentioned earlier, we do anticipate it would be a combination of purchase, lease, probably a fee that would be associated with it as well for replenishment. But we will be working to get input there. We do think, as I mentioned earlier, that we will be working with these schools, identifying what existing resources our schools are using to purchase technology, and how might we use that to help purchase and pay for mu, much of this work moving forward? Because our schools are spending quite a bit of their money on an annual basis for purchasing student technology. So we feel like in partnering with our principals, we'll be able to better identify that, and that may be part of our solution moving forward as well. And then of course, our professional development. We do have a good bit of money in the professional development model for the pilot schools. We know that we're going to have to have a more cost-effective model moving forward. But we feel like once we've had an opportunity to develop the modules and do some of that work, that we may be able to scale it in a more cost-effective way moving forward. And then I'm going to end by saying, I do know this, this one thing for sure about Fairfax County Public Schools and the people that we have throughout the system, is when we set a, a goal and we say, this is where we're going, we're, our, our staff always does it and does it so well, they rise to the occasion, and they always make us proud. This project's not going to be any different. And I do believe two to three, four years from now, people are going to be looking to us to see, wow, how did they do it? So that's our goal. And I, I will assure you though, there may be still unanswered questions in your mind. I think those questions will be answered over time if they're not answered tonight because we do know that we need to have those questions answered. But I will assure you, I have every bit of confidence that this program and this initiative is something we've got to figure out. We've got to start somewhere. If we keep waiting till we answer, have answers to every question, we'll just keep getting further and further behind other school systems. And we recognize that we have many of our students that are missing out because we don't have this long, long-term strategic strategy. So I just want to say, I just wanted to end with that. I do believe that this is going to, this is good work that's already been done by our team, and I anticipate that it's, will lead to a really successful, long-term plan.
Thank you very much, Dr. Garza. I have in line Mrs. Strauss, Mr. Moon, Mrs. Corbett Sanders, and Mr. McElveen, other people who want to speak. So I'm going to start with Mrs. Strauss.
Great. Well, thank you very much for all this information. I am very comforted to see the amount of work and effort that has been ongoing. And I agree with Dr. Garza, we have to start somewhere. And clearly this is part of our strategic goal. And we expect, no matter how tight the money is, school goes on every day, and we have to continue to plan for going forward, not going back. I agree that starting small with one pyramid so that we can learn from that. And every year, we have always redeployed equipment. This is not a new thing. When all the SOLs were online, we did a huge amount of redeploying. I mean, that's because we just never have enough money. So, and I am also pleased to hear that you're redeploying within that pyramid. So we're not, while we are going to be providing new material, in other words, we're not taking away from some other school or some other pyramid, because I know some people were concerned about that. There is tremendous amount of backup material that you've provided to us. Not only process how you've been thinking, what you've been researching, which, what you have observed nationally as schools have attempted to go down this. I even see assessments for children, assessments for learning, the beginnings of the rubrics. Again, as we talk about port of the graduate, how are we going to assess ourselves? Well, I'm, I'm seeing it. And so this is excellent. And the professional development, clearly just in time, professional development, the TED Talks for teachers. We've all seen that, and it is, in fact, where we, where we know we need to go. So to use this project to also make more progress is, is very exciting. I have seen too many school divisions actually waste money and squander time because they have not thoughtfully gone forward with these projects. But this is much more thoughtful. And as a school board member, I would have been very uncomfortable spending any money on this until we had a plan and that I thought was a significant plan that gives us feedback that enables us to grow and learn before we actually, because we have scarce dollars, before we actually commit new dollars. And Dr. Garza, thank you for saying that this may be several years. I think that's realistic. But if we don't begin this, we, we know we already have a lot of schools who are doing one-to-one on their own. They are spending their own money, they're raising money, and so it's kind of like growth by topsy. And that's not an efficient way to really provide the best teaching and learning for students and the new TED Talks for teachers. So I'm very pleased with the, with the amount of material that you've provided. There were a lot of questions the last time, and my questions have been answered. And thank you for beginning to really bite off a very large chunk of the strategic plan and giving us a good roadmap, even if it takes a while. I think it's a responsible roadmap, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. And Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Thanks for the presentation. I have not had as much time as perhaps Mrs. Strauss to go over the documents you provided earlier today. And probably I will need to spend some time to look at this later on. But I have a couple of questions regarding, you know, selection of this particular pyramid, Chantilly Pyramid, namely, that as a pilot project, wouldn't you want to have pick a pyramid where school is with average readiness, average support, with the average resource availability? Just to try out what our, what would be the required efforts to, you know, for, for the future, instead of picking probably the best pyramid in terms of readiness and having resources, support? Because that will only tell us if you did that, just tiny, tiny bit of what do you want to know, what do you need to know going forward for the rest of the county?
I will, I think it's an excellent question, and I would invite anyone at the end of the table to respond. But we did find in other school systems that were very successful in the implementation is they started, they started with their first grouping of schools, their design pilot, just like what we're doing. You don't want to go out there and start this project when you have a very few number of people who really want to take this on. So those that were successful started, only initially started with, with schools where there was a high degree of, of ownership and buy-in. For example, we know that moving forward, that we will have to work with schools where maybe there's less readiness, but we need to be able to develop that readiness with them. But we need to have the support structures in place to help bring them along. Do you want to add to that?
I would just add that, I mean, the, the group that reviewed the proposals, I mean, we had this very discussion and debate for quite some time. And I, I think we've kind of struck a sweet spot, if you will, with having the Chantilly Pyramid along with the e-Backpack Schools and some of our other schools kind of give us a mix of what you would see in the organizational development literature that talks about when you're initiating change, you have different types of people. You've got your innovators, your pragmatists, and your conservers. And I think the group that we have represented in Phase One has individuals and schools and all- in all three of those areas. So I actually think we've got a good balance and a good mix there.
The schools, those five high schools that are doing, you know, similar, you know, program, those with the state grants, when they picked those schools, did they ask us for our feedback, you know, which schools would be ideal, or is it simply based upon certain state-chosen criteria?
Just based on state criteria, schools with accreditation issues and high ESOL populations.
Okay, just one minor question, this is the last one. On the usual fee, you know, hearing, you know, what superintendent said about next year, you know, it's not going to happen, you know, it's not going to spread throughout the rest of the county right away, it's going to take some time. On the usual fee, once Chantilly Pyramid Schools go through this, do you expect the discussion of the usual fee for those schools right away? I mean, so, I mean, schools, those getting devices, or the schools?
We had that discussion, and we decided for the very first year, we were not going to have a fee, because it would take some ramp-up time. And we did not give the Chantilly or any of our pyramids a heads up that they would be issuing a fee. So we'd be working with them to see what the readiness is in terms of when we can start implementing it. But it would take, it takes a lot of ramp-up to also be able to establish the parent, you know, commitment and support for that fee. But we, you know, hopefully perhaps the second year is our current plan.
Okay. This is another question, just comment, that based upon my own experience as a board member in Fairfax County for some time, you know, implementing something county-wide takes a lot of time. A full-day kindergarten is a good example, took a lot of time, finally got it done. But the schools chosen as the first group of schools, they hit the most benefit of full-day kindergarten. Do you think this may be one of those where the ones chosen as a pilot, ones chosen first, will get the longest benefits, you know, for the longest amount of time? And then, as I said, as I said, I was not supposed to ask a question, it was a comment, rhetorical comments, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moon. Appreciate that comment. Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. Obviously, we haven't had a whole lot of time to digest what's in this binder, and I look forward to spending some time to digest it and expect that we'll all have more questions in the future. But there are a couple of things that came to mind. One is, I would love to hear from you how the experiences that we have had already with the existing one-to-one computing in the county, the deployment of the eCart system and the deployment of digital textbooks has informed what you're doing here. And if you want to answer that, then I've got a couple of others, or I can just give you a couple, all of my questions at once.
Well, I think we have many digital learning initiatives, and the ones that you mentioned certainly are important ones that we've tried to learn from and consider. But certainly, I mean, we have many more digital learning initiatives than, you know, just what we have in our eCart curriculum repository and what we've done with online textbooks. So, you know, we have lots of online learning programs and things that we've really tried to promote, things like Google Classroom and Google Apps for Education, trying to get our teachers to be, you know, setting up their classrooms so that students can be more collaborative, can communicate better in the classroom learning experiences. And I think we've tried to learn from all of that work as well as the national body of research. And I think when you have a chance, I would direct your attention to a few of those kind of seminal studies and pieces of research that we've included in your packet. One of them is Project RED, which was a national study that talks about best practices in this type of implementation. So we've tried to incorporate both national learning, things that we've learned from other school sites, and then learnings from our own digital learning initiatives within Fairfax to inform our work.
So what do you think are the most critical things you learned in that?
Well, part of what I was talking about in the professional learning, I would kind of reference back to that professional learning plan, is one of the critical factors in going one-to-one in an entire classroom or in an entire school, that's very different than just somebody who's an originator that's really comfortable using technology and wants to think about how to integrate that into their own classroom experience. So kind of the three-phase process that I talked briefly about in the PD piece, we have to make sure that teachers are comfortable managing the devices. That's why the device selection is so important, because that has to be easy. It can't add to a teacher's workload. They have to be comfortable with that. They have to know how to set up their classroom for digital learning. They have to think about how, I mean, how we can help them see the value of the productivity in a one-to-one classroom environment. And then we can really scaffold and support the continuous improvement and innovation around teaching practice. But that's something that we have to have a very tight, a very deliberate, and a very intentional planning process of how we get people to that point. So again, we reference in the binder what we've referred to as kind of our digital playbook for setting up this work in schools. We've only given you five pages of that playbook, but it's very much set up like a coach would set up a game plan when they might have a, you know, a very competitive athletic competition that they're going to go into. They've thought really specifically about how they're going to execute their strategy for that game. And our playbook is our attempt to really try to make very clear to schools how we're going to implement our strategy for getting teachers and schools ready to go one-to-one. We currently, it's a work in progress, but we currently have a lot of resources and a lot of steps that we want to make sure that we're really checking off and supporting schools with helping them get ready for the management, the productivity, and the instructional innovation.
As we, as, if you look at our strategic plan, there's also a statement or a strategy included around thinking about new and different learning management systems. We haven't even really begun that work. We're going to at some point need to do that, because we recognize that eCart has been in place for a long time. How many years? Twenty-something years? Long, long time, long time. And as we look to the future, there are probably some tools that are more integrated, that are greater, they have a easier, they're much easier to use. But again, yes. So, you know, this is one piece of kind of how we're thinking about the future around technology, but we know there's some other components that are going to be important, is how, what kinds of tools do our teachers need? How can we be, use up-to-date, more recent kind of technologies and innovations there? There's some wonderful tools around adaptive instruction that many school systems are using across the country that we're not yet there yet, we need to get there. And then finally, textbooks. You know, that's another conversation we're going to continue to have to have, you know, as we look at additional adoptions. Some of our, the new publishers out there are no longer even providing a text. We have struggled with the math, you know, we recognize that. Of course, the math has been in place for some time. So we'll have to struggle through those decisions and make the right decisions for our system. But those are all kind of pieces of this, I think, moving forward.
Well, it's a jigsaw puzzle.
It is, it is.
It's very much like a jigsaw puzzle, and each piece has an impact. And if we try to shove one piece down too hard, then the rest buckles. And so that was one of my questions is, in looking at this, you know, what have we learned in the past? What do we know we do well in integrating new technology? But the other part of it, and this is where, why I mentioned eCart, is the content development. Because there's the textbook piece, the content available through that. But as we all know, learning extends beyond a textbook. And so I was pleased to hear you talk about the virtual professional development, but there also needs to be a feedback loop to really get feedback on what's working, what doesn't. How do we share best practices, not only within a building but across, especially at the elementary schools? It'll be interesting to see how you share across buildings. And so your collaborative teams actually become broader than bricks and mortar.
And as we make future decisions, like for example, around textbook, textbook choices and adoptions, we'll certainly learn, use what we've learned from our experience with the math textbooks and the social studies textbooks. Those are the two areas that we've had experience in. And we'll use that experience as we make decisions moving forward on future adoptions. And I think these schools can also help us make some of the decisions moving forward about what works and what doesn't work.
If I could just add a couple of things real briefly. All of the work that we're actually doing in instructional services, not just in this project, but other strategic plan projects, is all built around the idea that we need to design collaborative partnerships with the teachers in the schools to understand from their perspective the issues and the challenges that they have and really innovate the work together with constant feedback loop setups. I'd be happy to talk to you about that more in detail, kind of offline, because I think it's really exciting work. But the digital resources piece that you mentioned is critical, and that's where we're working with our consultant to develop some new kinds of structures and provide training to all of our curriculum specialists in how do you really think about developing digitally-enhanced curriculum in a way that hopefully is as seamless as possible in terms of integrating into classroom instructional practice? So that's a big area of innovation and continuous learning for us, but it's an area that we're focusing on.
Great. And now just a final thing on this note, and that is, we've got to figure out how we overcome students that might not have access to the internet at home. Because many school systems are kind of getting away from that being the thing that they're focusing the most on, but being, making sure that our schools have, you know, our hours are extended, our ability for them to access the internet in our own schools and partnering with, we've talked a lot about this with SCPT, how can we make sure our county makes this a priority so other facilities have wireless available, public facilities? There are some communities that have provided access to entire communities, which I think is very forward-thinking. And, but in the meantime, there might be ways for us to have students download what they really need, you know, for that evening, and so they'll have it on their device at home. And so not having access to the internet at home would not be the barrier, but something certainly I think that we need to figure out with our county leadership.
And just a final, couple of comments regarding the financing of this. You know, I understand you say it's at zero cost because we already have the money in-house, but what are we not doing with that money to make it available for this? So for example, the $800,000 in project management funds that are here, what are we doing, is that, that we're not doing next year? And similarly with the professional development, what professional development are we not doing so that we have professional development money for this?
As I mentioned before, those are funds that we, first of all, we didn't say it doesn't require, it has no cost. We said, no, no new money will be required for the pilot. So I just wanted to be clear on that. We, every year, we're able to prioritize the use of that money. So I would tell you, there's not, for example, there's not professional development that's not going to happen because we're doing this. This is money that we have available to us to support strategic initiatives, albeit it's kind of a small amount of money, and oftentimes we don't have nearly enough. But it's money that we can prioritize on an annual basis to support these initiatives. So we don't have a listing of things that says we're going to do this instead of that. This is something we're able to prioritize on an annual basis. Do you want to add? It's like, it's like...
It's identified each year. So as digital transformation being one of the key essential projects within the strategic plan, we had set aside within PMOC to be able to do the PD portion of this particular initiative.
Set aside money this year?
Because that's what was identified for this year's initiatives. It's the $800,000 for the PD, so all of the PD component will be coming from the project management funding.
Thank you. The steering committee, is that similar to the task force that's being done elsewhere? Who's on the steering committee for the task force on this project? Because it's referenced as a task force here.
So we have multiple stakeholders on that. I think you do have a document in your binder. So there's executive leadership, so members like Steve and Francisco from Cabinet, Department Assistant Superintendents, but we also have principals, teachers, and we're in the process of trying to identify some students as we do this work and probably some parents as we do this work.
Could I suggest that you let Mrs. Corbett Sanders know where she can find that list? And then I...
That'd be great. I apologize, I don't actually have a binder in front of me. So we'll find it for you, though, definitely.
All right. I appreciate that. And if you have other questions, we can, you can go back.
I've got some that I sent back.
Okay.
Here it is. It's on page 37 of the binder.
Page 37. Great. Thank you so much. So we're past our allotted time, but...
The leadership section.
But I do have six more people, so I'm going to suggest that we do our best to go to 7:30. I imagine it's, well, actually, that's not going to work, is it? So maybe 7:40 if we can do that. Okay, I've got two more then. So we'll go a little bit past, but that's all right. I have Mr. McElveen, then Mr. Press, then Ms. Huff, myself, Ms. Darnett-Kofex, Ms. McLaughlin, and Mrs. Schultz. So, Mr. McElveen.
Okay, so I'll go pretty quickly. Thank you for the excellent presentation. My first question is on the Chantilly Pilot and two specific pieces of it. Number one was need a factor into the decision. And number two, were there other innovative practices in this pyramid that made it more attractive than others?
So the criteria that we looked at, again, was based on the readiness rubric, the staff support for the work. And we did not specifically look at need, because there are students in every one of our schools that don't have access to technology. And we know that we need to fill that gap and meet that need across all of our schools. So that was not one of the overarching criteria, because again, we were trying to create a balance in the schools that are going to participate in this Phase One work. And the Chantilly schools are not the only schools that will be participating in the Phase One work. So we were really looking for those innovators in this work that would work very closely with us to establish best practices. So we did not specifically look at need with respect to the Chantilly Pyramid.
As we move through this year, because I anticipate, hopefully by April, we'll be in a position to talk with you and maybe about adding another pyramid, you know, maybe two. We had hoped to do two pyramids this first year, but we were advised from other school systems not to take that many on in the first year, particularly since we were including our e-Backpack Schools, because we feel like we've got to make sure that those resources are being used effectively and we're supporting those schools. So we were advised from doing that. So we had originally thought we would, you know, pick from two different parts of our county, but we may be in a position to add in the 17, 18 school year.
The readiness rubric is on page 10 of your very last sections, and the whole application process is outlined here, including the readiness rubric in detail.
And then the second piece was innovative practices. Is there anything particular in the Chantilly Pyramid that stood out?
I mean, and there were a number of things that stood out in their application itself with respect to technology. And again, I mean, those are some pretty interesting artifacts. We could always make some of those things available to the board. I would just say in general, though, my experience has been that the Chantilly Pyramid is very collaborative, and they have, you know, very deeply embedded practices across the elementary, middle, and high schools in terms of setting pyramid goals, working very collaboratively towards those goals. Within the individual schools, you'll see lots of innovative practices around project-based learning, things around performance-based assessment, things that we're trying to do with respect to portrait of a graduate. So I mean, I think you'll find a lot of innovative practices in those schools, but it was really more the sense of collaboration and coherence in terms of how they would work together as a pyramid that we were looking for instead of additional innovative practices outside the realm of one-to-one.
Got it, thanks.
In addition to their instructional innovation and their collaborative nature, they also really highlighted their technology, their Chantilly Academy in terms of being able to do support and using their students to help do some of the support of the devices and whatnots, had a very innovative approach to support as well throughout the pyramid.
And then also, thank you for the show and tell. I know all of us like to touch, touch and feel what's going on. The, with the HP model, can you tell us why we chose that one as opposed to a Chromebook or other things and what student feedback specifically led to that choice?
While Mayor Beth's looking up that form, we actually have four schools that we've given, that wanted to try Chromebooks. We have some reservations about Chromebooks, although we're staying open-minded about them. So we do have four schools that have asked for permission to purchase Chromebooks with their own money. And so we've approved that, and we're just kind of watching and learning from what they're doing as well. But there were some real reasons, and there's an analysis.
Look, on the ECO session, page two, basically, we looked at a lot of it in terms of all of instructional applications that we have, the supportability in terms of being able to manage a large-scale deployment. One of the things that we learned, like in... One of the things that we learned, like in LA Unified, and even some of the districts that have done it, they didn't have devices that were easily supportable when you have a large deployment. And so that's one of the things that we have a very strong infrastructure in terms of being able to manage the Windows environment. We have 150,000 current Windows devices, again, different models, but that we can, we can centrally deploy and centrally issue software. We have a lot of different instructional software applications that we utilize that are specialty software, whether it's math or science and different kinds of technology. We can deploy that centrally if they have a particular device, application they need for a particular instructional program. So the Windows device, and you can sort of see a graphic at the bottom on page two, that all the, the applications, and we look, we talk with our Chromebooks look sites that are currently piloting this year, and all the applications that they were running, we can run all of those applications that they're currently running in that environment, plus more. So that was kind of basically, it's sort of a, the applications that they can run is a subset of what we can run on a Windows device. And as I said, we have a lot of instructional applications that currently only run in the Windows environment. That's continually to change. Again, we continually evaluate these different devices. So we had a lot of different devices, including Chromebooks, Windows devices, different, different brands in our tech lab. We've had a lot of different teacher input, kid, student input, et cetera, and also instructional input to make sure these things, all of it would work, and was also supportable. So there's a lot of detail in here that you can look at.
And this will evolve over time, it's something we'll have to pay attention to, because the devices are changing, the capabilities are changing. I will tell you something else we learned. One of the first schools to receive the state grant for the e-Backpack was, I think it was Stewart High School, wasn't it?
That's right.
And they elected to purchase a bunch of iPads.
Right.
Right away, you know, we learned that that does not, iPads do not, do not work for as many applications that we want to use from, for a general basis. So that was a learning. We said, okay, you can no longer purchase iPads. Now, iPads work really well in certain identified areas, like some of our early childhood programs, iPads work great, some of our special education programming, they work great, but they're not the best for, you know, all of these kinds of functions, functionality that we need. So we're not saying you can never purchase an iPad, but for this purpose, we're saying this is where we think it's best right now, and we'll continue to, to assess over time where we go.
We also want to make sure they could, they could work offline. As Dr. Garza mentioned, that we want to make sure, a lot of the Chromebooks, pretty much, if you don't have internet connectivity, it has very limited capabilities, and that's one of the things, you could still do a lot of creation, and we can download all of our online textbooks and things like that on the Windows device with not needing Wi-Fi at home. So that was another, that was another consideration.
Okay, and then final question, and I'll take this off, offline. I know we've taken field trips elsewhere in the past, whether it be Mooresville or other places. What do you think are the top couple of lessons we've learned from those, and how are we implementing those here?
Certainly, we learned that you have to have a full, comprehensive plan. So everything from professional development to having the financial plan, and having a division-wide collaborative team, which I feel like we have gotten a really strong support throughout the entire district to be able to, to look at this. So we did look at having, we went to Baltimore, we went to Mooresville, we went to, we went to Henrico, down near Richmond, that have done a lot of large-scale deployments. And in every case, they've done this plan, they've piloted before, they've gone different division-wide. A lot of the things that we're doing here, we've learned, we've learned from their successes and also mistakes. And certainly, that was all about instruction, and much more in terms of about instruction than it is about the device or-
Thank you, Mr. Press.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the presentation and the real wealth of information that's in this binder. I really look forward to working, working through that. I think there are a lot of things that we can stand to gain as a system through this effort. I think there are a lot of lessons for us to learn, perhaps a few cautionary tales that are going to come out of this, but lessons about best practices in implementing technology, not necessarily on a one-to-one scale everywhere, but just using technology in the classroom in general. So with that said, I have a few questions. One of the questions I asked at our previous work session, and maybe we, you know, as we've begun discussing a little bit more around this user fee, is I have concerns about students who may not opt to participate in the program. And as I said, you know, spoke with Dr. Grant about this, I don't ever want there to be any sort of negative consequence or penalty for students who opt not to participate. So I guess that would be my first question, is how are we going to guarantee that for students that, that opt not to participate, not, you know, pay that user fee or whatever, that's an individual choice?
I, I think, first of all, those are the reasons why we're not doing that with the pilot, because we need to, we need to be very thoughtful about how we do that. I do know that some of our schools that are providing the one-to-one are giving students the option to bring their own comparable device. A lot of systems where a student, if they have a fee and the student chooses not to, to pay for the fee, that's fine. When they come to school, there's a device provided for them, or they can bring their own. So there's a lot of things that I think that we can, we need to work through, and that's why we're not opting to do that initially.
Well, I'm, I'm very glad to hear that, and I'm glad to hear you mention that BYOD policy. When I interact with students, technology is something that comes up very frequently about how we're using technology in schools. Computers are maybe lagging behind where we need to be. It's a concern I hear very frequently. Two concerns that I hear probably the most, though, are, my first one, first comment, and then a question coming off of it, is BYOD. A lot of students feel we're not necessarily where we need to be, feel that we're almost a little bit behind with empowering students to bring in their devices. So is that going to be an evaluation criterion for us when we are taking this one-to-one? Are we going to be allowing students to bring in their own devices and see how that plays in with our one-to-one strategy?
Yeah, we, we definitely are allowing the students to BYOD. We've been encouraging that, and some schools have lots of kids bringing them in, and some schools do not. So that's part of what we're doing with this, this Phase One pilot, is to really be a little bit more, you know, systematic in terms of being able to embrace the BYOD, but that is definitely part of our current strategy.
Well, and I think that's why the, the professional development's such an important part of this. You know, I, I would tell you that if, if I were to go back to a classroom tomorrow, I'd need a lot of training on how to effectively implement technology, among many other things I would need a lot of training on. So, and I think that's why, you know, we have not had this intentional division-wide strategy for how do we equip teachers. And so that, I think that's probably why it's, it's maybe more widely embraced in some schools versus other schools, or some classrooms versus others. We also know that BYOD has served us well. We've been a national model in that. But to some extent, if, if it's only a, an iPhone, that's probably not sufficient to do the kind of work and, and create the kind of work that we know is needed for, for our students to be successful moving forward. So, but bringing your own computer or laptop that you prefer, yeah, I think that's definitely down the road going to be something we will definitely allow.
No, I, I really appreciate that, and I think that that's going to be really critical for us as we move forward, because, you know, when I talk with students about this particular project and an idea of us, you know, increasing the amount of technology we have, it's, you know, one of the responses I hear frequently is that, you know, I, I'm, I'm glad I have access to technology at school, but I've got stuff that I can use myself, and I, I really like to be empowered to use that more. So I think that that's going to be something that I really look forward to, to hearing, how we can integrate in this plan.
Ben, I'll tell you that Irving Middle, right now, is a great example of what you're talking about as it relates to using Chromebooks there, but they also have a high percentage of students bringing their own devices that meet the criteria.
I really think, you know, as we see more trends of students using their devices, I think that's a trend that we're going to need to be keeping up with. The second one I hear about, second concern I hear from students about is the framework in schools, network infrastructure for things like, you know, we see it very frequently around SOL testing time. We see that we've got wait periods when, when students are trying to get online, and, and there have been concerns about when everybody's trying to use devices simultaneously, that, that the network infrastructure may not be there. Has that been a concern that we're, we're looking at throughout this project?
Well, certainly, you know, we continue to, to look at our, you know, we do a lot of testing and evaluation. I will say during SOL time, we actually administer our network to give the SOLs priority. So we purposely make everything else slower so we can ensure that we have the top bandwidth available for testing. We have to do that, so we have to, so the kids don't get stuck while they're testing. So that is an intentional slowness that we implement for non-testing devices, so. Now you know the truth.
No, right, no, I figured there was something behind that. But we, we do feel confident the infrastructure is there.
Yeah, and we will continue to look at that, we will continue to add, you know, access points and things like that when we have, when we have those challenges. So if you do, you know, we always encourage our schools to put in tickets if there's something that they have a particular location that seems to be slow in, in the schools, but we will continue to, to do that.
And I, I don't want to speak for Ms. Schultz here, but I know she and I are very, very passionate about the idea of giving digital citizenship instruction, so I'm very excited to hear that that's going to be a component of this. I look forward that, you know, maybe we can develop modules for that to go division-wide, you know, sooner rather than later. I think that getting that instruction out there for even our elementary school students, you know, we're seeing that, that access to, to the online world is starting earlier and earlier. You know, I didn't really get on social media, for example, until middle school, but now, you know, I'm getting Facebook press requests from, friend requests from fourth graders. So it's like, you know, it's, it's starting earlier and earlier. So I'm very excited to hear about that. My last comment is about, and question, is about the way we're going to be incorporating our digital instructional materials. You know, we had a little bit of a conversation earlier about textbooks. I am not someone who believes very strongly in the power of online textbooks, because I have not had a good experience with them, and I, you know, anecdotally, from, from many of my peers, it has been a similar experience. I think that, you know, the infrastructure in, in other areas of learning is there, you know, with, with online databases, you know, you know, access to, to video lectures, things like that, that teachers can incorporate into their work. I have not been sold on the idea of, of online textbooks yet. So I would just ask, is this digital transformation in, or FCPS on initiative in the Phase One going to incorporate in it access to those instructional materials? Are we, for example, going to say, well, we're going to, we're going to, you know, shift you from solid textbooks to online textbooks? Okay?
No, not at all.
Any decisions we make about textbook will be system-wide, and, and we'll take those on with every adoption that we have, and those decisions, obviously, would come to the school board.
Well, I'm, I'm very thankful to hear that, hear that, and thank you for all your, your hard work on this.
Thank you, I'm just going to make a gentle reminder to all, all of us that we do have the budget to discuss tonight, so the remaining board members. Let's all of us be succinct if we can. Mrs. Huff, that was not a comment on you, but it's your turn.
You're not getting fair press from my fourth grader, but we're not on Face, we're not on Facebook yet. I do want to follow up on one of Ms. Corbett Sanders' questions. So for the $800,000 that we are using for this pyramid, does that mean that the other 23 pyramids are not going to be getting their replacement costs on technology?
Well, first of all, this is not all of the replacement funds, so it's a portion of the replacement funds. So we still will prioritize in terms of other areas that we're going to be replacing existing equipment. So it's not, again, each year, we prioritize the most important programs that we're going to spend this money on. So this year, as I said, because of the, of the strategic plan and this pyramid, this is where putting a portion of it, but it's only a portion of the replacement equipment funds this year.
Okay. And I've heard you guys mention a lot of research in the successes of the other divisions. So what are a couple of the successes that you're really excited about?
Well, I, I think for us, we're really looking at that definition of digital learning, when you can use technology to change the time, the place, the path, and the pace of student learning. So where technology really becomes a tool to open up educational learning opportunities for students outside of just the space of the classroom during a particular set period of time. And we do see schools that have been able to do that. We see some classrooms that are able to do that in our school system right now. So really getting students engaged, developing personalized learning opportunities for students that really are relevant to them, and, and really engaging for them, and really based on their learning goals and their interests, and getting kids excited in learning. When we can do that at scale and do that for all of our kids, that's where we're going to see the equity issues in the achievement gap and things like that begin to shrink. So we do see school systems where they're seeing really strong student achievement outcomes with respect to the implementation of the technology investments that they put into their school system. So those are the kinds of outcomes that we want to see here, and of course, for us, our outcomes really are those attributes of the portrait of a graduate. Are students really going to be able to effectively work as critical and creative thinkers? And how can the role of technology support them doing that? Are students really going to be able to be collaborators, and not just with the students within their classroom environment, but are they going to be able to collaborate with experts in the field around the world? And we have classrooms where that's happening right now, where students are collaborating with students in other classrooms, where some of our students are collaborating with experts in the field. And those are the kinds of things that we get really, really excited about when we think about being able to do that at a bigger scale.
And I'll tell you, some of the, the ways that some of our teachers are using Google Classroom is pretty remarkable, and to hear our students talk about that experience is really phenomenal.
So I guess conversely, I've heard that, I've heard it stated tonight that we're behind. So, so what does that look like, besides our kids physically don't all have computers? How are they, how are they, how are you measuring that they're behind these other divisions that we've gone and seen that do have the one-to-one technology?
Well, I, I, and again, I think we can point to those pockets of excellence, and, and we have many of those in Fairfax County. But when you look at school systems that have designed very intentional plans to provide access and resources to all of their students, that's what we've done as a community, and that's what our board, that's what you have done, is building that goal into our strategic plan, and then it's up to us to figure out how are we actually going to be able to implement that and achieve those goals. We see other school systems that are farther along in that strategic implementation than we are. We're just at the beginning of system-wide implementation, but we see districts that are farther along in that work. We see districts that are district-wide in this work.
Right, but, so are our students in the sense of being, so I understand that we're behind in actually having the technology, but are our achievement gaps wider than those who have the technology one-to-one? Or what are the, I guess it goes to my next question. I saw that we do have a national tool to collect metrics, but what, what is that data? What are those metrics we're going to use to say that right now we're behind compared to those districts that have the one-to-one? And here, here are the metrics we're going to say in two years, when we decide to go division-wide, here's where we've seen improvement due to the one-to-one.
That's an interesting question, because when I say that we're behind, I would not ever say that our outcomes are, are less than other school systems. I mean, every metric that you look at, we're still outperforming most, if not many of the school systems we're even talking about. But, but I think the point, at the point is, an absence of us having a strategic enterprise solution to some of these challenges, it's going to be left up to individual schools, which creates pockets of inequity that I know is, is of concern, I think, to, to the board and into the school system, is that we need a strategy to ensure that every child in our system has access to electronic and digital tools for learning. And in absence of having a, a strategic plan, it's up to, you know, a forward-thinking principal or a PTA that's done a lot of fundraising, and have they done it well? Most of them, I guess, have in terms of professional development, but how do we know that we're doing it in the right way? So that's what I'm thinking, we're, I'm saying we're behind in most of these school systems that we've been interacting with. They've developed those standards and those expectations and those systems of support so that when, when we are spending this money, we're spending it in a way that's making a difference in classrooms.
And I would only add some of-
So, and I appreciate that, but then I, I guess the expectation I would have is that the, the divisions where we've studied and seen that have already implemented this equity for everyone, that they have less achievement gap than we do because they have more equity?
Not necessarily in terms of the achievement gap, but I think there's a couple of things here. When we talk about being behind, we also have to look at the research that talks about how education as a whole, K-12, is behind in terms of where we need to be with preparing our students for the world that's coming for them in the future. So when we think about behind, it's not necessarily comparing us to other school divisions, per se, although there has been some study around an opportunity gap as opposed to an achievement gap, per se. Although I think as Dr. Garza indicated, we're doing very well in terms of our performance on academic measures. If you want to just solely look at tests, and that's where we think about achievement gaps sometimes, when we get into our standardized tests. But if we're thinking about where we're, where we are outside of the standardized testing, that's where most of K-12 education is quote-unquote "behind" when you look at the research. So that's what we're trying to get ahead of, is are we preparing our students for the world ahead? Or are we just trying to get in par with other school divisions? So actually, our thinking in this is not just comparing ourselves to other school divisions, it's really about where do we need to be as a, as a whole?
Thank you, Mrs. Huff. I'm going to take my turn now, briefly. My, my question has to do with, with Phase Two, and I, I do very much appreciate all the background material. I think this is going to-
material. I think this is going to be excellent for us to, to go through. I do understand the choice of Chantilly because of their readiness and because of their being at, at the top of readiness. For Phase Two, I think I may feel a little bit differently, though, because then, you know, we need to start taking need into account. And is that our plan, to take need into account?
I do think with Phase Two, and I'm hoping, you know, I don't want to get too far ahead of us, but I'm hoping in April, when we bring back the plan to you, we'd like to add, because I think it, I mean, I'm gonna jump ahead of us a little bit, but in Phase Two, I think it makes perfect sense, what Mr. Moon just described, right? Okay, we've learned from a school that's ready, right? And we've done a lot of the background work. It would then make sense that we look to schools, a grouping of schools, where we have to establish greater organizational readiness, and what do we do in those kinds, a different type of setting of schools. So I agree with you.
Would you anticipate that it would be one of the backpack schools because they're the, our neediest schools, or no?
Well, I think we'll just, we'll be working with the backpack schools this year. So we're treating them as part of our-
But I mean, in terms of expanding it to the entire pyramid-
To their feet, or, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Because, you know, that, that to me would, would make sense as well. So just a couple of technical questions. Are the, the backpack schools, are they, do they also have the HP Pro book, or are they using another device? They're using the Pro book as well. And so we've learned from that experience as well. Okay, excellent. Last question on that. Is the entire backpack, is that all grant? Is it, is it entirely grant?
All grant.
Okay, all right.
There's some-
There's a portion match that they have to match that's professional development. They have a matching component that's professional, goes towards professional development.
Okay. So I will go to Ms. Darren at COFEX.
Well, I am the perfect follow-up to you, Ms. Evans, because I pretty much have the same comments. I do appreciate this in-depth presentation. It shows the careful consideration that you all given to begin this initiative. So thank you for this follow-up from our last work session. And I also appreciate that we're adopting a long-term strategy. We're not rushing into it because we've looked at so many best practices. So thank you. The questions that I had, the one was answered as I look over the final section, how, how did Chantilly rise to the top? So I get that. I also, one of my colleagues mentioned if we are, how to, or I guess Dr. Garza mentioned this, how to accommodate those to when they bring it home, and how can we do that? And I'm wondering, is there any plan currently because, to currently expand the time in our school libraries, or things like that, where they can? Because I think that initiative needs to begin now, regardless of the one-to-one devices. So do we have a plan? Is that somewhere in this book to begin that process?
We've actually started that, like, two years ago, the Access for All.
Ecosystems, page five, talks about our Access for All standards. And we are, again, continuing to encourage more of our schools to abide by all of these access standards, which includes keeping their libraries open after hours. We, we update annually our, our digital pyramid maps that we have where community access points are available in their community public libraries, et cetera. So we have a whole series of also encouraging the use of the Internet Essentials programs, et cetera, like Cox and Comcast offerings. So there's a whole list of areas that we're working on to try to, again, encourage access for all of our kids.
Okay. What, could I, could I ask you all to provide to us the extended library hours at the schools via the areas or regions or pyramids, however we do that? I, because I don't know that that's happening in every one of, and, and is it only, is it at all schools? I mean, because high schools seem more logical, because the elementary schools' kids aren't going to stay.
Is that a next step you'd like to have?
Yes, yes. I would like that.
Are we all in agreement on that? All right.
Okay, thank you. And then, this just follows up to what Ms. Evans said. While I do understand you looked at best practices for choosing Chantilly, and readiness was looked at versus real need as the overarching criteria, based upon our lessons learned from the Chantilly Pyramid, combined with the e-Learning Grant, I strongly encourage that the pyramids with higher needs be working and ready to apply. However, we need to do that, if we need to, you know, I saw part of, again, not having a lot of time to digest this, but I saw under Phase One implementation, that, you know, the information was given via regional pyramid meetings, principal meetings. Slone, you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, one thing that we've left out is that part of the work that we're doing actually can transfer to any of the schools. So part of the plan that we're developing right now is that the schools in Phase One of this plan will actually work with schools around getting them ready to implement. So part of that is building the culture of readiness in your school. So principals from the Phase One school, they had to agree to help us lead this work, are going to work with their colleagues to start to build that culture of readiness and organizational readiness. The PD modules that we're going to have are, I mean, those are not going to be just restricted for use in Phase One schools. So we do have some things in place that we think will help kind of speed along the organizational readiness for Phase Two and Phase Three and beyond.
Okay. So I appreciate that very much. And, but I do think, I, I just want to say this out loud, I think moving need up to one of the highest priorities in Phase Two is, because that need is that opportunity gap. And moving that to the highest priority and getting those schools, while we're simultaneously working with the one pyramid, having everybody else working on getting those who were not likely to rise to the top based upon this kind of criteria, to make them more competitive. So, so when we, they are competitive based upon, they're ready, but they're also needy.
Thank you very much. I have three more board members, then we'll wrap up. Ms. McLaughlin, then Mrs. Schultz, then Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I know you're trying to keep us all on time, but given the conversations I've been hearing about the budget, I'm certainly comfortable with the fact that if we ensure that all the board members at least can ask questions about this, I'm sure we'll be fine. I, I don't want to shortchange this conversation, so I just wanted to make that little pitch first. First of all, since I was the meeting manager the last time, I want to say to staff that this is amazing. What you've pulled together is exactly what I would hope, as a board, we could collaborate with all of you together. This is a, a major shift that, you know, Dr. Garza and the team has brought to the board for consideration. And in order for us to partner with all of you, we have to really understand what this is going to mean. And I've, I think this is a really fantastic collective body of information that you've given us, and, and I want to first say thank you very much. I feel remarkably better about where we're going with this. I also really appreciated the, the indication that we could have quarterly updates, that there would be, you know, annual review. And those are things that really, again, I, I think is essential for board members. We want to be representatives and ambassadors and facilitators for the community to understand what this means. And so you're providing us this information, enables us to help the school system. So I know there's a lot here for all of us to digest, and I, I just want to touch on some things that struck me right away. I wanted to get a sense of how we've brought in the teacher voice to this. In particular, I know we have 45-10 meetings. I know you've mentioned the working groups. But as someone who values the relationships I have with our teachers, we know from even the word cloud on the engagement survey, overwhelmed was the number-one word. And I don't want our teachers to feel overwhelmed on something that is exciting, but we have to be really mindful. And, and looking through the professional development walkthrough, I was overwhelmed. So I just wondered, again, because we have limited time, just to speak to how we're ensuring that the teacher voice about the implementation as it's being drafted here, how they're helping us to understand the manageability piece to it. And I will also note that on page six of professional development, it said that for the summer, two-day summer institute, teachers would be encouraged to attend if they have classroom responsibilities. And a, a piece of the answer I'd like to understand is why they'd be encouraged. I would think it would be essential. And then if they can't, then obviously try to work with their professional, I mean, work with their personal schedules. But I would think every teacher would need this, if we're going to have strong footing.
You, you might want to touch on the PD piece. I just want to say the overwhelmed word, you know, I took really to heart. And I think that's why it's very, very important that we start with the pilot schools, the design, the design phase with the schools that want it. They're saying, we want to do this, the teachers included, parents, students, they want this. The e-Backpack is a little different grouping of schools, because there hasn't been necessarily, I think, that same. But I think our ability to go in and really provide additional support, and maybe learn from how that was implemented with the e-Backpack, I think will help us. But we don't want to overwhelm, and, and that's not where we want, where we want to start. And I think having a lot of teacher input, school-based input, will help us design this in a, in a way that makes sense for our teachers. But I do know that teachers who are involved on the, the task force also, the planning group that's been meeting. So we're very well aware of the need to engage our stakeholders. As we start to develop a comprehensive plan for phasing over time, we'll certainly also engage our teacher groups and other employee groups in those conversations.
So to my question about, that it said they're encouraged to attend, what happens if the teacher doesn't go to the two-day institute? How will that affect the pilot in the fall for those classrooms?
Right. So again, we're trying to find the right balance between one-size-fits-all and customized support, and, you know, recognizing that, again, there's lots of different factors that we need to consider when we think about what are the right schools to roll this work out in. Obviously, need, as, as we've discussed, is a big factor, but teacher readiness is a big factor. And from the chart on the slide, you can, again, see we have a high level of readiness, but it's not 100%, right? And we don't know that 100% of the faculty are available to attend, you know, summer learning opportunities. So we know that we're going to have to have some flexibility there. Our hope would be that we'll get as many teachers as possible in that two-day institute. And then we're going to have to design kind of the professional learning networks and supports to accommodate the needs of the teachers that are not able to attend. So trying to recognize that we can't require everybody, and we wouldn't want to require everybody to attend, we've got to have those additional supports for the folks that can't make it. The school-based technology specialists, the ESPTs, are going to be really critical in supporting the individuals that were not able to attend. The teacher's CLT members are going to be really critical, because a lot of this is going to be built around functioning as collaborative learning teams, not as individual teachers in this work. So we're going to have to rely on our peers in this work. And then, of course, the central office support for the teachers that aren't able to attend. And then in the PD plan, I don't want people to be overwhelmed, because people are not going to have to go through and complete and, and, you know, every single one of those training modules that we talked about, that we've listed in the plan. Again, the intent and the idea is, we need to develop the resources that we can provide on a differentiated, individualized basis to teachers, to provide them the support that they need as just-in-time kind of training to help them with the work that they're currently involved in. So there's a lot of stuff there, but the intention would not be that everybody has to complete it. Not, everybody doesn't have to complete it in the same way or at the same time.
Okay. The other thing, as I noticed on page 15, where you referenced Project RED, I wanted my colleagues to really, if you can, make sure you look at that. It kind of gives a nice little bullet point. And I want to make sure I, I'm absorbing this accurately. To me, what this playbook is saying, and I, Dr. Presidio, I hope I'm the pragmatist in the group. I, and my colleagues know I'm not the innovative one, that's what my Myers-Briggs showed, but I don't want to be one of the contrarians either. But as a pragmatist, what I saw from this is going to the message of that technology is going to enhance the learning in the classroom. It's not going to supplant it, it's not going to take it over. And I, I felt like these bullets really speak to that, and I wanted to make sure, because that gives me a lot more comfort than things like teachers as facilitators and architects and coaches. That, that language does not capture that teachers are still, you know, instructors, they still impart knowledge. And so this feels like it's, they're imparting knowledge, and the technology is enabling that enhancement of the learning process, both in the classroom, but not 100% of the time they're in the classroom. And then, as Dr. Presidio talked about, it takes place outside the classroom to, again, enrich what was taking place in, in the instructional day. So am I right?
I think, I think you articulated that quite well, actually. I think what we've said time and time again, I know what I've said, is technology will never, and should never, take the place of a great teacher. It's a tool for enhancing the learning, which is, I think, I think you aptly described. And certainly, we recognize our ability to differentiate and personalize learning. There's just, there are going to be more and more great tools moving forward, that if our students have access to them and our teachers, it can enhance the learning. But will never take the place of that great rapport and instruction that's provided by teachers every day in our classrooms.
Thank you for that, because I do know in talking to students, they like the small, you know, small group learning, but they also really enjoy the dynamics of a whole classroom conversation. You know, the teacher helping them really kind of think deeply, and then they're hearing and listening from each other in, in a shared learning environment. And so that's, you know, one of the things I'd want to safeguard. And then, I guess a final comment is, you know, I, there's been some conversation tonight about are we behind, you know, K-12. And, you know, I just want to speak from someone who's living it right now with two children in, you know, rigorous, you know, collegiate learning environments. Fairfax County prepared them extremely well. And they are, you know, at fine institutions where they are doing exceptional work. And at no time have my children said, boy, I just, I'm, you know, really can't keep up with my peers in terms of how we're using, you know, the different projects and, and technology and things. They, they seem really well-equipped. So I just thought that might be another positive message to state that while we are looking to, again, capitalize on technology to help enrich the learning, we're very fortunate in Fairfax that we've always continued to prepare our students to, to go to college and beyond. And I'm living and experiencing it right now. Ms. Evans, I would just say that my personal next step ask would be that the chair and vice chair work with Dr. Garza to figure out when would be the next kind of pragmatic time to, you know, touch base back with the board on this again. I don't think we necessarily want to wait another quarter, just because this is sort of new. But if it seems like in June or whatever, that you guys want to touch base with us again, or July, but something before we go into August recess, I think would be-
All right. As when we get to next steps, we can, I'll raise that. Thank you. Mrs. Schultz, and I, we, we have three more board members. And I, I know we're going to be about an hour behind. I apologize to Mrs. Strauss for, for, yes, for, for going over. Okay, Mrs. Schultz.
So I'm not sure, Ms. Evans, earlier you said something about, something making sense to you. And it's funny, because my immediate takeaway was, I, I'm not sure what makes sense to me, because I got 300 pages, you know, and 24 hours to, to review. And admittedly, you know, we did have this as a work session before, but it was clear that there were a lot of unanswered questions by board members. And frankly, I haven't had the time, haven't been given, you know, the proper amount of time to vet this information. I guess one of my big takeaways, and Dr. Presidio, you said, we're doing this in order to help the kids communicate. And Mike, I, I guess the overarching question, I don't want you to answer it quite yet, is communicate in order to do what? And a couple of my colleagues have a little bit gotten at it. Mr. Moon started, and I think potentially Ms. Corbett Sanders as well. Because if, the question is, and that's what, you know, academics up there is intended to be driving student achievement, if there are other school districts that have such terrific results from the types of things we're proposing, where is the information from those other school districts? In some kind of a white paper or an executive summary to our board that says where those students were in terms of student achievement, what they did, and then measurably how student achievement changed, and how that relates- achievement changed, and how that relates to our student population? So, you know, saying that other school districts are doing it, you know, yeah, you know, that's a jumping-off-the-brIDGE quote to me. And, and the reason I'm particularly concerned about this is, year after year, at NSBA, I've gone out of my way to go to breakout sessions by school divisions who've presented on exactly these type of issues. On one-to-one, on the, the foils and the pitfalls of one-to-one, people who've done it well, how they've done it. And the overarching takeaway consistently, whether it's in Arizona, California, Kentucky, Florida, every place I've gone to, it is caution, caution, caution. Do not go, do not, this is, this is a dangerous area. It can get exciting. You can feel like, "Well, we're behind," you know, in technology and 21st class, 21st century classroom. And the need and the drive to add technology to education, I don't know that the answer, the back end of that formula, of that equation, to do what, has even been present? Like, I don't even know that we fundamentally have a grasp that technology for technology's sake. I mean, I went to Atlanta to the ISTI conference and participated in the first national town hall on technology and education. This was the epicenter of the discussion. And, and, and when I just go down and I start to tick on things like, you know, the maintenance cost, and Dr. Garza, you brought up, and one of my schools was one of these early adopters and a gung-ho parent community, and they were thrilled about, you know, working all year long to buy this fleet of iPads for the school. Within six months, they said it was the worst thing they'd ever done. Six months. They spent a year and a half raising the money, and they, like, you know, it was a facepalm. But, but that's substantial, and I know that we don't want schools doing them individually. But the student's perspective, Mr. Press is exactly right. I have talked to over 1,200 of our kids. More technology isn't necessarily better. And, and technology in the classroom. And so where, where is that discussion? I'm very concerned about handwriting. I never hear about handwriting anymore, about fine motor skills, and more time in front of a screen, and the visual motor processing. What does this do? What does the blue light do? More screen time, more sedentary time with technology, and, and how that is affecting student health and well-being. The other thing that students talk about all the time is that time spent doing homework with digital devices causes digital distraction, and that they inherently know that it takes them longer to do their work when they're doing it with a digital device sitting in front of them. And on a rare instance, I come across a student who says, "I have learned that I have to take my digital device and put it in another room in order to effectively do my homework." We haven't even talked about that part.
So, Mrs...
Because everything's, no, I'm sorry. This is too, this is too important.
No, I know, which is why, if I could ask you a question, Mrs. Schultz?
Which, which school districts? Where? What are the outcomes? What percentage of the replacement funds? You said it's a percentage, but you didn't say what percentage. I don't know how much. So, I, I mean, I want to do this, but I don't know that I have or possess any information that says this right now, and I got to tell you, I'm the last person at this table that will go and ring the equity bell, but I got to say, to pick the, the school, "It's my school. I went there." To pick the school that has the Cyber Patriot program and one of the highest rates of certification, of earned certification by students of any high school in, in the division, to say, "That's the school that has the gap that we'd help close?" Like, I mean, moving the people that are at 99.999 to 100, I, I don't know what we learn when we have places where, I hear proclamations all the time, that it's enormous and we, the kids don't have devices and everything else. And then I read a study from Florida that says the one-to-one device was terrible because kids are being assaulted at bus stops so that people could steal the one-to-one devices. So I just, you know...
So, Mrs. Schultz, what I'm trying to get to is whether you have a proposed next step, because these are huge issues that you're...
These are huge issues. And, and I sort of feel like we're, we've been, we've been, we've been raced to a precipice, and we're not giving a, given a choice. I mean, we're, we're doing this, it's done, we're, we're going, but where, where was the front part of this? And this is the, I am sorry, but it's the same frustration that was Monday last week. And I don't, I, it, my, my frustration wasn't alleviated by getting this, because I haven't had any time to, to, to absorb this and have some basic fundamental questions answered. So I guess you can start with, what percentage of our replacement funds? And I'm back to maybe Ms., Ms. Huff's, which is, what aren't we going to do? What is the, what's the, what's the cost impact elsewhere on not spending that money on replacements, which, you know, kids burn through electronic devices at very high rates?
Dr. Garza, were you wanting to...
Yeah, I would. I would love to respond to a number of the questions raised by Ms. Schultz.
I actually would love, Dr. Persidio, but...
Do you mind if I answer? May I, please? Okay, let me start with saying a couple of things. I think we've described what was important to start with the school, that there was a high level of readiness. I, I can imagine the emails and the correspondence and the response you would have gotten if we started with a school that wasn't really ready. I think that, that would be a recipe for failure from the get-go. So I don't think that's where we start. And I think we've done that with other pilots, too. Start where, where we, we have some element and, and some confidence and level of success, and then we can build from there. Okay? I, I, I think we're starting with, with the right schools. I think we could go back and debate whether or not we need to do this or not. You know, it was in the strategic plan, if we need to spend some time talking about the direction that we need to go as a system. I think we all recognize that we have to have a level of reasonable and appropriate balance with use of technology. But do we really think that technology's not going away, and there's going to be a time where less is going to be needed? You know, I, I think it's time for us, and do we think that less technology is better for our students? Does it put them on the same and equal playing field? But we certainly recognize that we have to be thoughtful. And places where it hasn't worked, we've learned that we have to be slow and thoughtful in the implementation. We're not going out and giving every student a device. We can worry about students losing devices, getting their devices stolen. We've had, where schools have done this, even here in FCPS, we've had very limited problems with our students losing devices. I think in our e-Backpack schools, I think there were only two. Out of all those e-Backpack of schools, only two kids that had a problem with one of their devices. So I don't anticipate. Our students are very responsible, and, and will take care of these, I think, very effectively. Now, I know that we were waiting for an answer to a question, and I was trying to give you a little time to find it. What percentage of the replacement funds would be used for this purpose?
And we're going to have to get back to, because I have the total replacement equipment funding that also includes some other items. But the $800,000 was the one-time funding that was set aside as part of the FY '15 year end. So it's all of the one-time funding. That's why we're doing the outright purchase with the $800,000. What is sitting in our replacement equipment funding is the lease payments of devices that we're replacing.
That 5%? Is it 95%? Is it 50%? Is it...
I think Kristen might have a number for us right there.
So when we look at funding to replace computers, our technology plan has $3.4 million for computer leases. And then in addition to that, we have replacement equipment funding of $5.3 million. So if we look at that in total, that's $8.7 million. When we look at the funding in this plan, not counting the money for PD that's coming out of our project budget, that's $1.4 million, so it's less than 20%. Actually, about 16%. $1.4 million is the total for the devices in this presentation for today. So the, both the one-time purchase that we're making as well as those leases.
So, Mrs. Schultz, do you have a next step, or is...
I mean, I guess I would love to know if there's these school districts that have had these tremendous successes. Do, do we have, I mean, are there white papers on any of this? Are there reference points? How similar they are in, in terms of demographics to ours? What's the length of time in which they've done this and there's been an assessment of the student achievement progress?
So you're looking for experience in other jurisdictions?
So, I, I mean, you know, if we're making this decision in large part because everybody else is doing it, or somebody's doing it successfully, then, then I, I would look at that. And I think really significantly are the health concerns about more screen time for kids, what that does to kind of the health and mental wellness. We just did later start times under the auspices of sleep, and yet, when I survey kids, 99% in high school have digital devices in their rooms overnight. You know, so, but we're talking about more screen time. So, you know, there are some significant concerns that I don't even see sort of like, you know, topically addressed, that have these other school districts that have done this successfully encountered issues with that, and how did they go about either mitigating it or...
Okay.
If, if I could just very briefly, because I think Ms. Schultz asks a lot of really good and important questions, and certainly I'm happy to follow up one-on-one with Ms. Schultz or any of the board members that have more questions. But just for right now, I just want to make sure that I'm not mischaracterizing what other school systems are doing, because I did not intend to say that there is an exemplar district that has got this all figured out and everything's perfect. I mean, I think the bottom line is that, like us in Fairfax, most school systems are continuing to really feel the effects of the Great Recession, underfunding, you know, and are really trying to figure out, you know, how, how can we do some of these things that we think are going to yield really strong results? And I think there's a good body of research that talks about some of the potential benefits. But I do not mean to say that there's any, you know, one kind of lighthouse district that's got this all figured out. What I was trying to talk about was, I think, what Dr. Garza did a good job of articulating, is that other districts have taken a deliberate, intentional, strategic approach to this work, and that's where we've been a little bit behind. And, and when I participated in conversations with the previous board in the community about setting a strategic plan, that was one of the things that we had talked about, was a strategic goal for us. And that's where we have some districts that are ahead of us, and we're a little bit behind. When you look at our student outcomes again, I don't think that we would want to compare our performance on standardized tests against another school system's performance on standardized tests, because one of the things that I've really admired about my four years in Fairfax is that we have really aspired to be more than that. And we've been having, I think, a very intellectual conversation led by the board about how can we think about the measures that are really authentic measures, that are going to be the core competencies and the core skills that students need to have to be successful in careers and in life. And, and the one example that I gave is of, you know, how technology can support students' communication skills, I just meant that as an illustration of one of the portrait of a graduate skills that we're trying to provide more support, more instructional support for. And when you think about what students can do with technology in terms of, you know, having that with them at all times, and really thinking about the kind of research that students can do, the ways that they can really kind of push their thinking and their own content, you know, in the content area classes that they're in, to think about generating not just a synthesis of information and ideas, but the analysis, the reasoning, the generation of new ideas, and communicating that in writing as well as in presentations. Technology is a tool that, that helps them along the way to do that. And I think there's a role for technology in supporting and furthering all of our portrait of a graduate skill. So I didn't mean to mischaracterize what other school systems are doing, but certainly you asked some really good questions, and, and I think those of you who have known me for, for, for years know that I am a pragmatist myself. I am not necessarily an innovator. I, I tend to ask really hard questions and have a healthy skepticism, and I appreciate that. I think it's important for all of us to, to maintain that kind of outlook and view of the work that we're doing, so...
Thank you, Dr. Persidio. I don't mean to cut you off, but I do want to try to wrap this up if we can.
Yeah. But I just want to, I just want to extend, you know, again, the invitation. I am more than happy to sit with individual board members and dig into this work in more detail, so thank you.
I would just like that. I know you haven't had a chance to read, but in the binder, but in leadership section, page 32 and 33, there are 10 studies there, and a couple of them do reference school districts and positive results, student achievement, graduation rates, a variety of things. So on page 32 and 33, there are 10 different studies there.
Mr. Wilson?
The good news is, is that although you were cut off, you're going to have an opportunity to speak again here in a moment, so. I also would commend all of you on selecting Chantilly High School Pyramid, Teresa Johnson. I think, I, you know, I think that she would do a fantastic job of implementing a program like that. She's got a lot of energy and, and a lot of creativity. And one of the things that I mentioned last time is that, because when we talked about this a week ago, you know, it was clear that the implementation of Phase One at One Pyramid would be a collaborative effort that, in my opinion, promotes the innovation that would be helpful to make this successful. And I, I have to be honest, that's my number one concern, is that, given that it's the 2nd of May, and we're having, having a conversation here, this is quite a, a big effort. I don't, how many elementary schools? How many middle schools do we have in...
We have nine schools total.
Nine, nine schools to implement Phase One by the third week of August, because, or no, the fourth week of August, because we're starting early next year. But it's not very much time. And, you know, I, I, I really, it makes me very concerned. I don't understand the complexities of it, and I haven't had a chance to go through the binder, echo Mr. Moon's comments. I just didn't have the time to spend with this. But it's, obviously, this is a radically different set of materials that we have today than we had before. And, and so, like Ms. Schultz, I feel like I'm not in a place to sort of thoughtfully think about what the materials are. But I am, it's, it is also obvious that this is, this is significant. And, you know, I think that if there's any hesitation that, that we might be better off starting in the following school year, that we be honest and say, "Look, as a pragmatist, let's make sure that we focus on making this successful," because this is the kind of thing that everyone sitting in this room owns it the day it starts. And, and so I, that would just, one, my one word of caution on how this works. Now, I did have some questions, because you did reference other school systems. So can, can someone tell me the experience Montgomery County Schools had? Because that is identified, or you do have a description of it? It sounds like they've obviously invested time and resources. What, what has been their experience? What pitfalls have they faced? What's been their...
So we, what we've tried, what we've tried to provide in the binder is references to other school systems and other studies. We have not worked closely with Montgomery County. We have worked closely with Baltimore County for a variety of different reasons. So I'm not personally as familiar with the work in, in Montgomery County as I am with Baltimore County, having traveled to Baltimore County and seen some of the work in process. I have not personally done that in Montgomery County, and, and I really don't think many of the folks in instructional services have done that. We've had several opportunities to collaborate with Baltimore County, though.
And this probably, maybe I'm going to get the same answer, but also in that same chart in the first section, you referenced that the Houston Independent School System began their program in 2013 with Phase One. What has been their experience, and what have they found to be, you know, stumbling blocks that, you know, we can learn from?
Again, I think there's, you know, there's some key takeaways, and we've talked about some of them that we can kind of generalize across the school systems. One is making sure that we're really sufficiently resourcing the schools appropriately to be able to do this work, so making sure that we've carved out the time for professional learning to really support teachers in making this transformation into their classrooms, because as you say, I mean, it's a monumental amount of work, really thinking through, and I'm not going to go through all of these, but basically the, the work that, of those guiding design principles that we've talked about, these are the areas that the research supports, that you need to make sure that you have developed comprehensive implementation plans in each of these areas in order for the initiatives to be successful. plans in each of these areas in order for the initiatives to be successful. So, the information in these particular studies, when you generalize that out and look at the lessons learned across individual school systems, this is how we, I think, the, the main lessons that you will see is the work that you have to do around strategic planning in each of these areas. And again, we can go into a lot more detail about the things that we're doing in each of those areas. We just tried to give, again, kind of an overview and a sampling with some of the resources here that hopefully articulates the work that we're doing in those areas a little bit better.
And I'd like to also respond. Another question that you asked, Mr. Wilson, that I thought was a good question that, that we need to better explain, and that is your concern about, here we are, it's May, you know, the 1st, 2nd of May, and we're going to start this next year. If you'll go back to the listing of schools, it was on that one list. There you go. You'll see kind of in the middle, those are the schools. And I'll tell you, they're all extraordinarily excited to work with us on this project. So, I don't think they're, they're worried necessarily about the timeline, but keep in mind, as we work with these schools, as we continue to refine the plan, we have control over the timeline. So, none of the elementary schools, I would anticipate, would be taking home computers, probably for some time, maybe later on, the upper grades. So, really, it would be the middle schools and the high schools, where we'd have to determine at what point are we ready for the computers to go home with students. So, I wouldn't necessarily say that, what's the first day of school, whatever the first day of school, that it'll all be figured out by them, because I think your question's a good one, Mr. Wilson. And I think these schools will give us, they want it to be successful. They want, like they do, like you pointed out with, with Teresa Johnson, they want to do things and do it well. So, I will assure you that if they said, "We can't have this ready to go by day, the first day of school," we will, we will flex and we will make sure that we do it right. And that may not be the first day, before the first day of school. So, I mean, your, your point is, is well-taken, and certainly something that we're mindful of. This presentation was scheduled for some time back, months ago, and it kept getting, we kept getting bumped, and I apologize for that. And we had to, you know, do, give it another, another shot, since we didn't do so well on the first one. So, and that's part of the reason why you're getting a lot of these materials late, is we had to squeeze it in, so I apologize for that again as well.
Mr. Wilson, are you finished, or you have more?
Oh, I'm getting closer.
Okay.
And, yeah, I know that, and I think the first topic now has exceeded our time for the entire meeting tonight, so... But I think that also reflects, you know, the seriousness of this initiative, you know, that, that it is so involved, and the materials you've given us, obviously enormous. But I would, I do want to press a little bit on this point, because I'd like, the reason why I ask that question is, I would like to know, how, how are you going to define success?
So, some of the things that we've talked about with respect to that go back to some of the documents we referenced earlier with the survey, the National Survey, the Bright Byte Survey, and the Speak Up Survey. And there are a number of indicators in there that we're using as metrics of success. One is just how effectively do students feel like they're actually using technology to support the learning that they're being asked to do? How do they see it changing the types of learning experiences that they have? So, moving from things that are very kind of rote, lower-level types of instructional tasks that we would ask students to just kind of memorize things and know things, and have kind of a base level of knowledge, to actually moving to higher levels of thinking, where students actually have to reason, where they have to problem-solve, where they have to present their ideas and, and what they know and what they can do. So, the information that we've got in both of those surveys, a lot of that is the baseline information that we're going to be looking at, and we're going to be monitoring that on an ongoing basis, because those are indicators of how technology is changing the learning experience for students. And then you get from how the learning experience then is actually then changing the outcomes, the student outcomes. But you have to start, when program evaluators do their work, they start with, "What are you putting into the system that's different than what you already do? What kind of output do you expect, and then what kind of outcome do you get?" And here, we're talking about putting in new inputs, the technology, the professional development, the digital resources and the curriculum. Then we want to evaluate, well, the outputs. How is that changing the teaching and learning experience that students are engaged in? And then you can get to the next level, which is, how do you measure student learning outcomes? And that's a bigger question for us, because we said, as a board, we've said that we don't want to just look at standardized assessments. We want to look at other things, performance-based assessments, what students can actually demonstrate, the kind of portfolio work samples that students can create, the kinds of exhibitions of, of learning that we would like to see. Those are all things that technology will support our teachers working with students and being able to do more effectively and more efficiently. But it's, it's a progression. We have to, we have to start with how the inputs are changing the system before we can start to measure some of those, those outputs. And a lot of the survey information, again, will help us with measuring the, the outputs in the system.
All right. I, I will refrain from asking further questions. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Ms. Palchak?
Hi, thank you. I will be brief. Thank you for this presentation. I'm sounding very loud. Sorry, I really appreciate the details, and I think my colleagues asked some of the questions I had. My big concern is, I know I was, I heard the report from the committee last year. I do think we have to take the, the Internet access seriously. I know we do, and I think while we are doing this and preparing for the next pyramids. One of my questions is, of the Cox and Comcast qualifying families, do you, do we know what percentage of those families currently access, use the program?
About 300 families. I think we've talked about this before, is that there are a lot of restrictions to those, and we continue to try to work with those vendors. But, you know, for example, if you've ever missed a bill, you don't qualify to be, use the program. So, again, there's some challenges with the programs. They're continuing to look at it, but it's, there's not enough kids using those programs yet.
It's not, I think, a great solution. And I think there's a lot of barriers put in front of families to, you know, first of all, they have to fill out all the paperwork, you know, they have to go some, you know, and they have to have someone come in their home and get it situated, and it's just, there's just so many, too many barriers. That's why I wish we could come up with like a county-wide solution, where we have Internet access for all. That's a, that's what many forward-thinking cities and counties have, have, you know, tried to do, and I think that's a real solution. In the meantime, you know, providing as much access in our schools, you know, the library times, just, they can pull into a parking lot in one of our schools and have access to the, to the Internet, and then having a lot of access in the community. And I think Skip has even talked about this a little bit. How can we broaden that access?
Right. So, I guess, following up on that, I know it's, it's not ideal, but I think we're still a ways away from access for all countywide. I don't think that advertising it more will make a huge difference. It may, I may be naive, but if we can, you know, I think the barriers, trying to break those down, is there a way we can have a point person per school, per pyramid? I know we have a lot of overwhelmed espits and other people, but perhaps through Skip. I think just trying to, or through HOAs, trying to find a way, I'm happy to support in any way possible, a way to help families go through that process. I know that it's been a challenge, and it's not ideal, but I, I think we really...
We've also shared a lot of the information with our parent liaisons as well, because sometimes they have access to those families, but...
They're overwhelmed as well. Right. I don't know if there's any school that has someone physically there, maybe an Internet signup day, that they're there supporting families. I don't know if that's happening, or if we can help pilot that.
There have been a few of those, and again, they've come in, we've had some of those, and then not everybody qualifies. So, because some of them also, it's only for kids on free lunch, not free and reduced lunch. So, again, that's another one of the restrictions, so it's, you know, it's, it's limited.
Well, and then, just, I wanted, I know, following up on Mr. Wilson's question, I do see that in the rubric, you have the target when schools have fully implemented this. As a teacher, I appreciate that. I do hope that we'll be using these rubrics to see that we've, you know, where our schools are in the continuum, and our classrooms, and our students, to ensure that we have achieved success with the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, you know, your thorough answers. We do need to go to next steps now. I heard possibly three, maybe four next steps, so I wanted to go, oh, you've already got them up. Provide a list of, and is Ms. Darrenet Kofax here? Because that was, that first one was hers. Provide a list of extended library hours in school by period, but that was connected to Internet access. That was specifically about...
Correct.
About Internet access. So, I guess we should capture the fact that this is, that this is connected to figuring out how much access students can have at school, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
The second one, I believe, Ms. McLaughlin said before August, you know...
So, I guess I would like to get a sense...
Is that what you said, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, she wanted to...
Before the August recess.
Before the August recess. Yeah, so, I guess, I wanted to get a sense of the board, whether there was enough interest in scheduling a, another work session sometime before the August recess. It would probably be in July at this point, because things are, are pretty, pretty crowded. But could I get a show of hands of how many people would like to have a follow-up on this issue before the August recess? As a work session? Yeah, okay, so that looks like a...
Let's try again.
Okay.
For the task of your work session?
Uh, well, Ms. McLaughlin, what are, what are you asking for?
You know, I really heard most of our colleagues say tonight that you understand the importance of this work, so I don't understand why we wouldn't want an hour...
Were you asking for a work session?
Yes, it should be a work session. A report doesn't allow dialogue with 12 board members.
Okay, so let's see how many people would like to have another work session before the August recess on this issue. That's one, two, three, four, five, six. How many would not? Oh, wait, did I get, okay, how many would not? How many would not? Three. So, we, we will schedule another work session on this before the, the August recess. Provide data stating what could be funded if... I'm not sure, who's, who's advocacy was...
We didn't vote on the first one.
We did, actually. I got a consensus.
I was asked to watch for...
On the first one, on the library extended hours? Yes, I asked for a consensus, yeah, I asked for a consensus on that when we were talking about it. So, is that answered, or... Provide data state... Whose advocacy was this? I guess we can delete that. It doesn't seem...
I don't even recognize it.
Okay, so, all right. So, I also wanted to go back to Ms. Darrenet Kofax, and I guess my question for, for Ms. Darrenet Kofax on the issue of making need a higher priority in Phase Two, is that something that, that you, that, Dr. Garza, you're looking for something from the board on that, or is that something that, that is going to be done anyway?
Keep in mind, we'll be bringing court reports to you. We'll actually present as often as you want us to. So, we can, in the fall, before we, or even April's when we plan to bring a plan back to you. Are you asking about if there's an additional...
When we're, when we're looking at the rubric on criteria, I think there were a couple of us suggesting that need should be a higher...
Correct. On, on the second phase or the next phase to, I'm very happy with that. I don't know how that's considered a next step necessarily.
Are you looking for a consensus on that, or this is just something that you were planning to do?
Let, let us just plan to build it in, into the plan, if that's all right.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. And is everyone fine with that? Ms. Darrenet, you're fine with that, too?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Information about school districts was, Mrs. Schultz, I believe that's yours.
Well, we have data on page 32.
But you had had data...
32 in the packet.
Mrs. Schultz, did you want to take a look at that before asking for that, whether that satisfies your question?
Oh.
Okay, so, let's take that off. Data on student health and more screen time. And that, again, was Mrs., I'm sorry?
Was that a follow-up?
Well, Mrs. Schultz had brought that up, so I guess, so...
Background information on what you've looked at.
We, I mean, student health and mental wellness, I mean, has been a focus of this board and is essential to student achievement, and if there's...
Asking, did you mean, did you mean that to be a next step?
Uh, uh, or a follow-up? I mean, I'm assuming that this has already been looked at, and it's resident somewhere in what they've already done, and if they haven't, I'm, I would hope that they'd be as curious as am I.
Background, student health, you're talking about the data on how technology affects student health?
Yes.
Okay.
Screen, more, more digital learning time, more time in front of a screen, more sedentary time, how, you know, the blue light, and what, what the plans have done to get kids away from that before bed, I mean...
So, I guess I would ask for a show of hands. Is this a next step, that the, the board is interested in this, at this, at this point? How many people would like to see that?
Do we normally vote on next steps?
Well, we're, we're doing that these days.
But now we're down to...
Okay, well, oh, wait, I see more hands, so let, again, let me see how many people would like to have...
We're talking about bullet number three.
We're talking about bullet number three. How many people would like to see more data about how technology affects student health, how, how technology and screen time affects student health?
I guess, I have a process question. We have work sessions all the time, and there's always items up there. I don't ever remember us voting off the island...
Well, we did this...
...reasonable requests for information that are germane to the topic we've just discussed.
Want to say something?
Yeah, we started at the last work session, and it's, I think what we're supposed to do, our, our usual policy and practice, is that when we ask staff to do some work for the board, it has to be a sense of the board that's asking for that. We can't, so that doesn't mean that individual board member's questions can't get answered, but I think if the, if the majority of the board is not interested in having this presented to the full board, then I would say a person, a board member who is interested in that should feel free to make an appointment with one of the staff members and ask to have that information for yourself. It's just...
Sure, I'd love to see who's not interested in having student health and mental wellness about more digital time. I'd love, I'd love that as a vote. That's great.
I guess, Mrs. Schultz, my only point would be that, for some of us, you know, we already feel like we have enough information on that, so...
Perfect.
So, all right, so I'd like to get a sense of the board. I mean, okay, so, how many people are supportive of having that as a next step?
For getting that information?
So, one, two, three, four, five. How many are not? One, two, one, two, three, four, five. Five to five. All right, so, that's, that's not going to be a next step for this work session. All right. And, and Dr. Garza understands what, what Mrs. Schultz would like to see, and what some of us would like to see. So, with that, oh, did you have something else?
I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
So, I, I did hear Mr. Moon, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Schultz, and others talking about the fact that this was a lot of information to digest. I also know that Mr. Presidio, or Dr. Presidio offered to meet with people if they have questions. So, Dr. Garza, I wanted to ask your thinking on this. I'm just trying to be thoughtful about staff time, and, and maybe this is for Ms. Hines and, and Ms. Evans to think about, but, you know, one option is that we could go ahead and schedule a voluntary meeting that's posted if more than two board members want to attend it, and then this way, Dr. Presidio's not having to, you know, meet with Ms. Schultz in two-by-twos if it turns out that there's five or six of us, so it would just be, you know, "Hey, we looked at people's calendars. Have you all come into, you know, gatehouse? We'll review this."
Suggesting this instead of the work session?
No, that's in July. This is between, I mean, today is May 2nd, and this is going to be sometime in July. I think it's reasonable that some board members are saying they're going to digest this and may want to ask thoughtful questions before July, and I'm just trying to find a way to maximize staff's time when you've got board members who are going to be asking questions or wanting to understand more about all the information in front of us.
Well, I think we're going to have to leave that at board members making their appointments with Dr. Presidio, and if, if two board members want to meet with Dr. Presidio, he's nodding his head, he's, he's willing to do that, so I appreciate that.
And before you know it, we'll have this other, other presentation in July, and we can have further information about Mr. Wilson's questions and others about timeline and kind of roll out where we are. So, I think before you know it, and we have lots of meetings in May and June.
And by that time, we'll have an opportunity to absorb this excellent information, and so, right. So, thank you all for, for this. And Mrs. Corbett Sanders, I guess I'm going to give you the last word.
Just a quick question.
Quickly.
Does any of us around the table have questions? Will have questions as we're all going?
Perhaps through superintendent notes, if, update, yeah, so that would be, that would be a good idea. And with that, this meeting, or this work session is adjourned. We'll take a three-minute break?
Guys, actually, actually, I'm sorry to say, or I'm, I'm happy to say, but we Guys, actually, actually, I'm sorry to say, or I'm, I'm happy to say, but we have actually a brief meeting in sixteen-ten that we must attend.
Oh, okay.
And then we can come back in here for the next session.
Brief meeting, brief meeting. Ten minutes, right? Fifteen?